This is GL 2519, on no-fault grants for basement flooding damages, I will take the release of members' holds. Counselor Layton.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Oh, my apologies, Counselor McElvee has the hold on MM 3618, but I have a motion that I think resolves all outstanding issues. I'll leave it up to her.
Madam Speaker, sorry, I can release the hold to Counselor Layton for his motion.
Okay, just a sec, let me find it. Which item is it?
MM 36.18, making immediate safety improvements to Avenue Road.
Okay, just a sec, let me find it. Okay, I have it, yes. Okay, Counselor Layton.
I have a motion, I have a motion that's been advanced circulated.
I might have a question on that, Madam Speaker.
So it's not a quick item?
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Carroll.
Hi, I think I have a quick one, Madam Speaker, because it's a, it's a very friendly amendment, just to add to MM 36.24. It's Deputy Mayor Minin Wong's motion over our heads. Clerk should have my, my quick amendment.
Okay, we can put the amendment on the screen.
I have, I have learned over time that when we're requesting a report, if you really want something in there, you should ask for it upfront, rather than be disappointed when the report comes back and there's no mention of it. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong mentions the associated property standards and public health and safety issues. I would very much like to include that they report back on, including pool enclosure fencing, no, no, including pool enclosure fencing, the city's bylaw, in their report. That, that they make a proposal to that effect, that the wording there is not quite. Pool enclosure fencing is already a part of the city's bylaw, I wanted to say, including in the report, along with public health, including compliance with the pool enclosure bylaw. Sorry, I hadn't seen the finished wording, I didn't realize it was not quite there.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Minin Wong, have you seen the amendment?
Fine with it.
Pardon?
I'm fine with the amendment.
Okay, great. So, okay, we're just gonna update it? Okay, we're gonna go to the next one, until we're able to make that correction. Counselor McElvee, quick item?
I'll take my name off the speaker, speaker list.
Okay, Counsel, Counselor Cressy?
Yes, Speaker, I have two. The first is MM 36.51, that is the 2021 Board of Health resignation and appointment.
MM 3651?
Yes, Speaker.
If we can put that on the screen? Oh, I don't see it on my screen, okay. All right, on favor, show of hands, carried.
And Speaker, the, the other one I have is MM 36.52, that's the limited liquor sale license, member motion.
Okay, on MM 3652? Members' motion? On favor, carried. Deputy Mayor Minin Wong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Speaker. New business, CC 36.8, 1460 Victoria Park Avenue. I believe staff have a motion prepared and ready? About adopting the confidential report?
Okay, this is on CC 36.8, which is 1460 Victoria Park Avenue. The amendment's on the screen, on favor, show of hands, carried, item is amended, on favor, carried. Counselor Fletcher?
I may be having to reopen one item, that was a member's motion, 36.29, to add a property, but I'll know shortly, while we're here tonight, thank you.
Okay. Okay, on MM 3624, the amendment, we've got that now, we'll put it on the screen.
That's it, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Is that okay, with the way you see it?
Thank you very much.
Okay, on the amendment, on favor, show of hands, carried, item is amended, on favor, carried. Now, Counselor Fillion, before the break, you had asked that you wanted to reopen an item?
Yes, I, I assume the clerk has something ready, it's one that we, I don't have the number in front of me, that we adopted yesterday? Sorry, that we, we refused yesterday. So, it's a, it's a settlement report which we turned down, a settlement offer which we turned down yesterday, and there is a new improved offer today, which is...
No, no, hold, hold on, hold on, hold on. You're... Yeah, you just read what's there, please do not...
Okay, sure.
Talk about the closed session.
Good, sorry, thank you.
Okay, it's on the screen, on favor, show of hands, carried.
Madam Speaker, it's Counselor Wong-Tam, I also need to reopen an item.
Just one sec, please.
Oh, sorry, thank you, sorry, I thought we voted ready, I apologize.
Okay, so, Counselor Fillion, on the new amendment, it's on the screen. On favor, show of hands, carried. Item is amended, on favor, show of hands, carried. Now, Counselor Wong-Tam, I know that you wanted to reopen item MM 3623?
That is correct, the title is local planning and the First Parliament master plan, I do need to reopen that, Madam Speaker.
Okay. Okay, the motion is on the screen. On favor, carried. Is there an amendment you want to make?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I simply need to amend the, the motion, so that it reads, instead of reporting to the Planning and Housing Committee on October 27th, we now have staff reporting to the Executive Committee on October 27th.
Okay, the amendment's on the screen, on favor of the amendment, show of hands, carried, item is amended, on favor, carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now go to GL 2519, which is the no-fault grant basement flooding. Counselor Carroll, you held the item down.
I have some questions of staff.
Questions to staff?
Thank you, I'm assuming they're there. So, the, one of the questions I have is, going back to look at the history of this, sadly, I remember it because I was here, but, but going back to find it in the documents is a bit frustrating, we had an entirely different reporting and minoting format in, in 2006, and so what appears before us, it doesn't tell us how we dealt with the finances in, back in 2006, after the August 19th, 2005 storm. Do staff recall where the funds came from to, to offer that grant at that time?
Yes, Madam, Madam Speaker, it's Ludy Geronimo here, speaking.
Sadly, you were still here as well.
Sadly, it was one of my first items. Yes, the funding came from the Toronto Water Reserve account, and, and we set up a separate fund that had a cap limit to it, and we put in rules for criteria to process the applications. And, and so that's how that was created at that time, was specific to the, of August 19th, 2005, and it was limited in a capped pool amount, as well as then processing the applications that had to be in by a certain date.
Right, but I wonder if, I, I wonder if you remember, because I couldn't find it contained in the, in the link that's provided in the report, I'm wondering if you remember that, that part of the reason that we were able to do it, and part of the, the way they arrived at a cap, is because we were working for, with a fixed amount, because it was leftover funds from the old North York no-fault grant days. So there was the sum, it was, it was approaching $4 million, but it had been sitting there since amalgamation anyways, so it wasn't really, you know, from, from the last 12 months water bills, per se.
No, that's correct, it had come, it was about, about over $3 million, and the way it was a portion, it was a very complicated...
Sorry, Mr. Geronimo, someone has their, their microphone on?
I don't know who's got their microphone on.
It sounds like we can hear their television.
Yeah.
There we go, I think it's gone, thank you.
So, so going back to it, yes, there was an order magnitude of 3 million, 3 to $4 million range.
Yeah.
We put together a very complex formula, that did a calculation, there was a, there was an, an initial advance payment of a certain amount that went out in a check, and then there was a final reconciliation based on the uninsured portions, we had to go through an adjuster, make sure that they went through the insurance, and then eligible expenditures were considered, and then in a second additional check was a portion based on how much was left in the pot, based on how many people were eligible, so it was a very complicated formula, but we tried to maximize the claims that were certified as, as being applicable.
Right, and so, and it, but it was really tied to the, to the fact that those funds were still sitting there, and so...
That's correct.
And, when you brought this report to committee this time, you, you were recommending receipt of this report, is it because you, you don't feel you have the same pot, the same opportunity, sitting there waiting to be used for something?
Yeah, so from a policy perspective, a grant program of this nature is, is being given specifically to individuals, and when we go out and set the rate, and when we tell ratepayers, you know, what they're paying for in the water bill, we, we had not factored in this type of, of no-fault grant program, essentially giving money to some people that experienced an insurance loss, primarily insurance loss, and, and we have not put that into the rate model. So at the end of the day, what you have is other users, other ratepayers are subsidizing that no-fault grant, so that was one of the equity issues that we identified in the report. Compounding that is that there's a number of water ratepayers who would never be eligible for this no-fault grant, certain buildings, commercial and industrial, ones that without basements, so they're actually contributing to a small subgroup who would be eligible for the no-fault grant, so from an equity standpoint, we weren't recommending that.
Right.
Also, from a legal standpoint, we weren't recommending it, in that there's no legal basis for the municipality to provide such compensation for these types of catastrophic events.
Okay, but I'm, I'm wondering how you would feel, but the, the motion I'm gonna move, are there, is there any legislative impediment, if we were to, if we were to honor this report request, the, the counsel is simply asking for a report back on this, and, and I think now is, is saying willing to be inclusive, and also what would be the impact of being inclusive of people outside of Ward 5 that had this?
That's...
Is there any legislative impediment to, to also, in that report, also providing suggestions of alternative source of funding, other than the water rate?
That's your last question.
That's my last question, thank you.
So, so there's nothing that would prevent that conversation from occurring, because the, the issue did come up, a committee trying to determine, you know, how, how do you compensate for these types of no-fault situations? Should it come from a pay-as-you-go, rate-based model that's designed to build the infrastructure and provide services? And this type of grant compensation was never part of the mix, can it come from a different pool, because it is more property-based, it is tied to storm events and, and, and properties that are impacted, and, so there's nothing that prevents you from looking at that, council has full discretion to, to look at sources of funding for, for a grant-type program.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Carroll to speak.
Madam Speaker, so Madam Speaker, I have a, a motion, I think clerks will put it on there, that, that adds words to that effect to your report request, that, the reason I'm doing that through you to counsel, Madam Speaker, is your motion, but, but also to the rest of council, we have a challenge, if you, if you read this report, you'll note that because pre-amalgamation, something called a no-fault grant existed, it wasn't ideal, because it was sort of an easy out, there was a, a no-fault grant program in North York to deal with failure of their water infrastructure, and consequently, they didn't really delve deeply into what was causing basement flooding, they didn't have a basement flooding mitigation program, they just said, here's a check, and, you know, we worked to move from the grant to an actual mitigation program that fixes basements, the reason, reason I moved that way back when was, was, I will never forget, standing knee-deep in the basement of, I'll never forget, his name was Mr. Shemalian, and he had, he was a collector of religious icons from the Armenian Orthodox Church, and they were all at risk in this flooded basement, and I was there helping them mop out, and, and listening as they, they were in grief about this, and he, he actually said, because he was a longtime North York resident, I don't want another check, I want you to fix this, I want this to never happen to me again, and that was sort of the birth of the basement flooding mitigation program, but that takes time, as we know, it's gonna take us 30 years to look at some of the places where we know we need to do something, and heaven knows we need to do climate change adaptation across the region anyway, because the extreme weather's gonna keep coming, and each time there's truly extreme weather, as there was in 1819, in these areas where the basement flooding program hasn't touched down yet to do, to do its biggest work, we have another, you know, it generates another request, what about that old no-fault grant thing? I understand that, I will never forget having, you know, I had 1,800 people who had sewage infiltrate their, their basements, and, and a couple, it went all the way up to the main floor, and, and, and you want to offer something, at those times, for the things that insurance doesn't touch, so at that time, in 2006, using that old reserve, staff came up with very tight criteria, it doesn't let you off the hook of having property insurance, doesn't let you off the hook of pushing to, to, to get insurers to cover us for flooding, as much as we possibly can, heaven knows that, that may go extinct because of climate change, but, but it doesn't let you off the hook, but it, it had stringent caps around it, to be very fair, and, and consequently, we actually didn't spend the whole reserve, about 25% of those who we, we thought might want it, actually went through the process and got funds, but what I would like to do, is if, if this is going to keep happening, it cannot siphon funds, in my view, away from the water rate, which is trying to do the actual basement flooding mitigation, and, and the, the bigger adaptation projects that we have across our, our area of service, and so, I'm hoping that, that when the report, that Counselor Nunziata comes back, when that report comes back, that, that it includes suggestions of alternative or blended sources of funding, so that we do not begin to offer a grant that stops us from doing the infrastructure work we need to do, because as Mr. Shemalian said, I don't want a check, I want this to never happen to me again. Those are my comments, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. So, on the amendment, on favor, show of hands, carried, item is amended, on favor, show of hands, carried, thank you, Counselor Carroll, for that amendment. So we will now go to the, the second timed item, which is MM 3636, enhanced tree replacement strategy, Counselor Grimes, you held the item down, do you have questions?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker, before you do, could you, I've asked the clerk, I sent a picture to the clerk, I'd like to throw that for the, that of my colleagues, so they know what we're talking about here, before you start my talk, throw the picture up, so people can see.
To Grimes, questions?
Is my picture, oh, there, thank you, Madam Speaker, yes, so questions, so, to staff, where did the request for the sidewalk come from? This is Second Street School on Dwight Avenue, and there's a row of nine trees that the city wants to take out, put a sidewalk, where did the request for the sidewalk come from?
Thanks, Counselor Grimes, through the speaker, the, the request originally came from the school, Transit Conservatives received a request from the former trustee to install the sidewalk on Dwight, this request came in about 2016, and Dwight Avenue is, is a collector road, and the city policy calls for sidewalks on both sides of collector roads.
Right, so we, we had a meeting, a public meeting, and people asked all the same questions, do we look at alternatives, do we look at moving that fence back from the school board, do we look at that?
Absolutely, we, we certainly looked for opportunities to not impact the trees, we looked at four options, a curbside sidewalk, reducing the width of the sidewalk to the minimum 1.5 meters, we looked at reducing the road width, and we looked at putting the sidewalk on school property, and ultimately, all of those options would have some impact on trees.
And people have been taking these pictures of this stretch, and showing it from above, and ever, and it, it looks like we can put a sidewalk on either side of those trees, but can we?
We worked closely with urban forestry on this, and they reviewed the application and determined that trees would not survive the impacts of construction, and the various options I just described, we did look to minimize the impact on trees, and, and came forward with the approach being removal of the trees, and replacing them at three-to-one ratio.
Right, and then they also, they asked, anyway, we could weave the sidewalk through those trees, but we're gonna impact the tree guards, and I think what forestry said was at the pub, meaning that these trees are probably, would die anyway, correct?
That's right, and I, I know urban forestry staff may be able to add to that?
They're there, yeah, that'd be great.
Hi, Counselor, it's...
Good evening.
Kim, I'm gonna defer to Kim, go for it.
Thanks, Janie, good evening, it's Kim Statham, acting Urban Forestry Director, yes, I can expand on what Jaclyn said there, that we would not recommend construction within the tree protection zone, we have advised that the trees would not survive that kind of impact, and that's why removal and replacement was recommended.
So they would not survive the impact of digging down to put the sidewalk on either side of those trees, and they wouldn't survive if we weaved in between them?
That's correct.
Okay, then there was the other one that, there was, that we're, the, the reason we're gonna widen these roads is Dwight and Birmingham, because of the development at the Campbell Soup development there, is any truth to that, that we're widening the roads for that development?
No, there isn't truth that we're widening the roads for development.
Okay, so, the school board, I, I talked to the principal of the school board, and the, and the trustee were on, the trustees on the call, but they're pretty adamant the safety of the children, number one, the school wants it, the parents have had the safety, meaning they want, they want to keep these trees, they want, sorry, they want the sidewalk, correct?
There is community support from the school, certainly, to keep, to have a sidewalk on both sides, and it is a collector road, so that is council policy, that we would have a sidewalk on both sides, with support from the community and the school.
We've got a petition now, it's, I couldn't present it, because it's not in the proper format, but we have 1,230-something names to, to narrow the road, and did staff look at narrowing the road?
We, we did look at narrowing the road as well, as one of the options, and found that it would still have impact on, on a number of the trees, and so it was not recommended.
So if we narrowed the road, we're still gonna lose trees, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the plan right now, as it stands, which I've kind of got on hold, is they would take the, these nine trees out and replace with 17s, I'd call them significant trees, is that correct?
Urban Forestry can comment, go ahead, Janie.
I'll just quickly comment, that's correct, Counselor, three, a three-to-one ratio, with larger trees as usual.
Any idea what caliper trees would be, would be planted?
So my understanding, Counselor, is that the, the caliper trees would be 80 caliper trees, which is larger than the usual trees that we use for replanting program.
Okay, and then, some of the questions that come up, that I'm sure my colleagues have the same questions, some of those trees that were planted there now are Emerald Ash, there was some question if they would survive the next five years or 10 years, is, can anyone comment on that?
I'm gonna ask Kim to comment on that.
Through the speaker, yeah, I understand that the, the makeup, the species makeup of the existing trees, some do include ash, which will be, and, and have been affected by the Emerald Ash borer, but we would still look to a three-to-one replacement ratio, regardless of species.
So that's my next, last question, I know, does the city have a standard, I know when someone takes a tree down their backyard or front yard, and, and let's say forestry does agree with them, use it, is it, is a three-to-one ratio we usually ask for?
That is a typical replacement ratio for city-owned street trees.
Okay, that was...
Okay, great, those are my questions, I'll, I'll speak to this, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for the questions, Counselor Grimes to speak.
No, I have questions. I'm down for questions.
Okay, I don't see your name on, did you put your...
Well, I see it on my screen.
Oh, okay, I don't see it on mine, okay, sorry, Counselor, I don't see...
No, no, not at all, Speaker, this is, it's hard to do these meetings, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, it's, for some reason, it's not on my, now it's on my screen. Counselor Perk, question?
Thank you, just, you know, by way of introduction, I'm fine with most of what is being asked for here, but I have some questions on part D, is it city practice to take out ads in local newspapers and solicit informational pieces door-to-door, when we remove trees from the public right-of-way?
So through the speaker, to Counsel Perk, it's not generally city policy, as has, is outlined in the bylaw, we generally post notices and have an online process around some of these processes, but we don't generally take out ads in newspapers.
Do you have a budget for this kind of thing?
For this particular item, we...
No, no, for, for buying ads to say that...
was a road replacement or a sidewalk replacement, we would work with transportation, if council directs us, to include it in, in the budget for that particular project.
Right, okay. Just off the top of your head, I mean, you know, how many trees would we remove in a year for reasons like this? Is it in the tens, hundreds, thousands? Just ballpark?
Through the speaker, I, I can't ballpark, I'd ask Kim to ballpark, if, if you can do that, Kim. We won't hold you to it.
Through the speaker, a ballpark of the typical number of trees that we would remove, similar to this instance, per year, would be in the low hundreds.
In the low hundreds. Do you have a budget to put ads in newspapers for all hundred, all of those hundreds of trees?
As Janie's, sorry, through the speaker, as Janie previously said, no, we do not. That is not a practice of urban forestry related to tree removals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday, questions?
Thanks, Speaker. The Campbell Soup factory to the north, that's just going through its site plan process. I think my question is for transportation, I would say Ms. Hayward. I think that has a road widening in it, but, but could you explain what we mean by road widening? We're not actually widening the pavement surface, and that's right next to this site. Just for clarity, I know some people have been communicating about this, and I, hopefully that's helpful.
Councillor, I apologize, I'm not familiar with the particulars of that development site, because development review is not in my team's role, but I think you may be referring to a right-of-way widening.
Right.
Which would be for the, the city right-of-way beyond what is existing city property that's designated as, as roadway, which encompasses both boulevard, sidewalk, and road.
Yeah, you, you mentioned it in, to councillor Grimes's questions, there, there's, there's an idea there that the road is being widened along this street in conjunction with that development, but that's not, that's not correct. You don't have plans to make this a four-lane road or a three-lane road.
No councillor, this is a, a road, a state of good repair project, and because it is a collector, and we've had a request for a sidewalk at this location, we're just looking to complete the sidewalk network.
So state of good repair, you're not looking to reconstruct this road, are you?
This work is bundled with other state of good repair work in the neighborhood.
Right. I, I think, because a, a number of councils, I think, were written to about this particular issue, and one of the asks buried in there was, was an idea that, that the road could be narrowed, and basically that's a reconstruction, right? When you, when you narrow a road, you got to move the curbs in and all that kind of stuff?
We, we did look at the impacts of narrowing the road. It would be, involve shifting the center line, and it would involve changing the location of curbs and the, and the crossfall of the road and drainage, as, as was mentioned in the earlier questions, that would also still involve impact on those trees.
Understood. If I brought you a petition with 1,000 signatures and say, could you reconstruct a road in my ward, you know, whatever one, trees or no trees on it, what would you do?
The state good repair program is, is governed by the condition of the roadway, and so road reconstruction is planned when it's needed, not based on petitions.
Councillor, yeah, we need to ask questions on the item we have before us.
It is, because I think part of the, the push was to reconstruct this road with respect to these trees. And the, the last point I would just make through a question, if I may ask, is that if the road was reconstructed, as was suggested, or narrowed, that would have a material impact on the budget for road rehabilitation in the Etobicoke-York district, and probably affect all the wards. Has anyone suggested a road that they would bump down the list, or not reconstruct and do this one as part of the process?
No, there hasn't been another road suggested to remove from the program. As I said, we did look at the, the option of narrowing the road, and, and it still had impacts that were undesirable to the trees, and so for that reason, we're not pursuing that recommendation.
Understood, thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Okay, thank you. Now, questions? If you have any question, I mean, sorry, speakers, can put your name on the list. Councillor Grimes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and to councillor Perks, I've changed my motion, I'm, the staff will put my motion on, start my time. Yeah, so I'm going to delete my recommendation, as it decides to remove two tall trees, sorry, is that the one? All right. Madam Speaker, I sent a new, a new motion to the clerk, do they have that? You stopped my time, restarted? One second. Yeah, so, sorry, instead of, City Council Director, General Managed Transportation Service, to halt the tree removal of 12 city-owned trees on Dwight Avenue until such time city staff can study the feasibility of narrowing Dwight Avenue in attempt to accommodate proposed new sidewalk and save the existing trees, and report back to December 2, 2021, meeting of the Infrastructure and Environment Committee on the findings. Now, I did ask all these questions to staff, that they have looked, so a lot of this work has been done, but I think it's very important that us, as the city, when we're removing trees, that we get higher, to a higher standard. I think we have to get the correct information out there, this petition's gone out, there's a lot of incorrect information flying in the neighborhood. The neighbors are all right, I've talked to councillor McKelley about taking this back through committee. I think the staff have done a lot of the work on this, but I do want to get the correct information out to the committee as to why 12, these nine trees are being removed. Our neighborhood loves trees, if you look here, this is the Long Ranch Tree Fest that just happened on the weekend, they want to ensure, you know, ensure that we have a 40% tree canopy in their neighborhood. I know a lot of your neighborhoods, the trees are important, and I just think there's just so much information out there about taking these nine trees out, and my motion said, you know, I want to plant 17, but I want to help, hold the city to three to one ratio. I wanted 80 millimeter, 80 millimeter trees to come out, but I just think the report is almost, would be done, because I know staff looked at a lot of this, but I just think it's very important, us as a city, that we get this information in a report and get it out to the community. I talked to the school trustee, they're not in favor of killing the sidewalk, I'm not in favor of killing the sidewalk, but I just think it's very important, us, us as a city, get this information back in a report, and bring this back in, in December, and get the right information. So those are my comments, and I hope you'll support my deferral, and we'll bring this back and get the correct information out to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Perks, did you have your name on the list?
I took it back off after I saw the deferral motion.
Okay. So on the, on the motion by councillor Grimes?
Recorded vote, please.
Recorded vote.
Yes, sorry, I accidentally turned off my CMP, I voted in the affirmative, thank you.
Speaker, the motion carries, the vote is 20 to one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item is T.
Madam Speaker, can I do a quick release?
Which, which one?
CC 36.13.
Okay. So you'd like to release it?
Well, there's some recommendations, which I believe have been circulated.
What's the title, please?
It is Bogart Avenue. It's a settlement report proposal, Bogart Avenue.
Okay, it's on the screen. On favor, show of hands, carried. Item is amended, on favor, carried.
Thank you.
Councillor Wong-Tam. Toronto and East York.
Yes, thank.
274 and 279, which you held down earlier this morning. Are you ready to release it?
Yes, ma'am speaker, and I don't have questions, just wanted to speak to it.
Okay, we're on T 274.
Thank you very much, ma'am speaker, I'd like to move the supplementary report that was put forward by city planning, to thank them for, for all the work in reviewing this application. It is certainly not a straightforward one, and I do recognize that there were a number of community opinions that emerged out of those discussions, including how do you incorporate new intensification into a heritage, an area that has significant heritage assets that are budding heritage properties, and I want to just thank city staff, as well as the preservation board, for their very careful review of the application. There is also, ma'am speaker, I wanted to bring to your attention, not only are we receiving some new housing in the, in the building, but there's an opportunity for adaptive reuse of the existing heritage assets, including the, the unlocking of a publicly owned, sorry, privately owned, publicly accessible space, which I think will be a welcome addition to the, to the area. The other thing, ma'am speaker, that I wanted to highlight is that originally, we started with a modest number of affordable housing units, only four, but after negotiation with the developer, and I want to thank them for their, their ability to, to work with us, as well as the housing secretary, we've now expanded the onsite dedication to seven units, including affordable, sorry, including sort of family-sized two and three bedrooms units. We did this without, obviously, the rapid housing initiative, but it, it was painstaking in, in order to pull it together. And ma'am speaker, one of the reasons why this report is coming so late is because it actually took that much time for the staff to get to the final detail. If we can find a way to do these type of section 37 agreements faster, more consistently, I think, number one, the developers would welcome it, the community would also know in advance of, of a final report and a supplementary report being, being tabled at 7:00 PM on a, on a Monday night, everyone would just have more idea of what's coming. So, ma'am speaker, I am supportive of this application as, as it's revised, with the height coming down, the density coming down, and better superior public realm, and of course, the addition of affordable housing. My only request, and I hope that we can do it in a way that is consistent, without having the, the championship of the local councillor, I would just like to see it as part of deal standard, as part of how we should be considering and reframing new density as it comes in. It is, in some ways, our own version of inclusionary zoning, it shouldn't have been so difficult, but, but we made it happen. So thank you very much, ma'am speaker, I just wanted to highlight that, and also to thank the planning staff and the heritage staff who were involved with this, this, this proposal, and of course, to the Saint Lawrence Neighborhood Association, once again, they demonstrate that you can have a blend of the old and new, and you can also have affordable housing in excellent public realm. So thank you to them and to the, to the, to the applicant.
Thank you. So on the, on the motion on favor, show of hands, carried. Yeah, and what about T 279?
Thank you, ma'am speaker, I would like to just move the, the additional supplementary reports from staff.
Okay. Okay, we'll display it. On favor, show of hands, carried. Our next item is MM 365, protecting healthcare workers. Councillor Ford, you held the item down. Do you have questions?
I do have questions to, to staff, ma'am speaker, I believe the Toronto Police Services in attendance for this item.
Do we, do we have them? So do you have questions, councillor Ford?
I do, I, I can go ahead if, if they're available.
Okay, can I just ask if they're here? I don't see anybody. If, if you can please identify yourself.
It was my understanding that Deputy Chief Myron Dempsey was making himself available because the chief couldn't.
I don't, is the deputy chief here? Councillor Ford, I don't believe that he's here.
Um, okay, I, I know it's, I know it's late in the day on, on the second day, councillor. I, I, my, my, my questions are for Toronto Police, as the motion is directed at them. So if you'd like to move forward with the item, that, that's okay with me, or if you want to hold it down and do a couple other items, I'll, I'll take your direction, ma'am speaker.
Okay, so let's just hold it down to see if the deputy chief comes in the next few minutes. Okay, our next.
Speaker, I have questions of other city staff, and I'm prepared to go forward with those to give the deputy chief time.
Okay, councillor, councillor, well, we have councillor Fletcher first. Councillor Fletcher, do you have questions to staff?
My, I, my camera is off a lot of the time to save the battery, so, speaker, yeah, but I do also have a question if the deputy's coming.
Okay, so we'll hold.
I think I'd rather wait, just to see what their response currently is, and what steps businesses should be taking.
Okay, so we'll hold it down then. Councillor Perks?
Yes, I, I have questions of the city solicitor on this item.
Okay.
Thank you. So this item's in reference to recent protests. Do the police have any pieces of legislation or tools under which they could have protected members of the public and healthcare workers at those sites?
Through you, ma'am speaker, yes, they do. Everything, of course, depends on context, and the police would always be keeping the charter breaks and freedoms in mind. However, if protests cross a line, so that there is hate speech, violence, threats, things of that nature, there are, there are offenses that the police would, could enforce. And also, the police do have authority under the Trespasser Property Act, so if there were to be a trespass notice from a hospital, they could enforce that.
So hate speech, threats, violence, and if there was a trespass notice, and I believe that can be given verbally at the time, you can walk out and say, you're trespassing, please leave, right?
We tend to do them in writing when we need to do them, but perhaps, yes.
But if, if a stranger came on my, my property, and I said, you're trespassing, please leave, or I'll phone the police, that would be adequate, right?
I would think so, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I do have a question for city staff, speaker, would you rather if I ask that and then ask the other one after? It's councillor Fletcher. How do you want to play this?
Well, I don't know, I'm waiting for the deputy to come, so maybe you should wait until the deputy gets here, and you can ask questions to the deputy and city staff. and you can ask questions to the deputy and city staff together. Oh, hold on. I believe the deputy is on now.
Good evening. Yes, Myron Dempsey here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go back then to Counselor Ford. Questions to the deputy?
Thank you very much, ma'am, Speaker, and good evening, deputy. Thank you for joining us. So, particularly, as we've seen in the media and in some parts of our city, a lot of demonstrations outside hospitals in a number of places, but particularly most concerning hospitals. And there's always, you know, Toronto Police have been in attendance for those to keep, you know, public order. I think maybe just to drive off my first question is just going off Counselor Perks' questions or line of questions. Do you think it's important, or from your opinion, that Toronto Police be in attendance at these protests that we've seen?
Thank you for that question, Counselor. Particularly when it relates to the hospitals, I take it you're asking, and I'll answer in that context for sure. So, I think the hospitals, particularly downtown, but hospitals in general are an essential service for us, particularly during a pandemic, but at all times. And in fact, the hospital role is a critical area of our city that we're very conscious of maintaining public safety in that area. When it comes to the protests and the potential that protests would disrupt access to healthcare, disrupt patient care, or hospital staff's ability to perform their critical function, we have to ensure that that isn't compromised and that the protests don't compromise that. And to that end, our presence is absolutely essential when there are protests in the downtown core related to the hospitals.
And to that point, Deputy Dempsey, how is Toronto Police balancing, you know, people going to and from the hospitals, whether it's people, visitors, staff, and maintaining public order with the multitude of things you have to do onsite at one time?
Well, I think there's a couple aspects to your question, Counselor, and I'll try to unpack them as best as I can. As it relates to the operational response to any given protest in and around the hospitals, I think first and foremost, it's important for everybody to know that we are very engaged with hospital staff, have been throughout the pandemic for a number of reasons, including preparing for protests. We are in touch with their most senior leadership on a regular basis. We're in touch with their security, their own staff operationally at the local divisional level on a regular basis. We also, of course, pay attention to declarations of intentions to protest, and when we become aware of that, we, of course, engage in immediate communication with the impacted hospitals or the impacted area around the hospital. Because, of course, you know, as much as hospitals are contained significantly in the downtown core, there are hospitals throughout our city. So, we are always prepared to engage with whatever division a hospital is in. In the context of the downtown hospital role, our members are very proactive in that area, as I said, engaging with them. And then, on the days of protests, we, of course, make sure that access to the facilities is not compromised. We respect people's right to express themselves and to protest, but it's done in a way that is peaceful and respectful of other considerations. And in the case of the hospitals, we do not, we make sure that the services and access to the services is not compromised by the protests. So, I don't know if that unpacked it sufficiently, Counselor.
That was okay. And then, my last, I guess my last question is how does the services, existing priority response system, deal with issues that may arise at local businesses, such as an anti-vaccination protest?
So, I, you know, those are, we deploy our resources in the most efficient and effective manner we can. We have to be responsive to public safety needs on a day-to-day, hour-to-hour, frankly, minute-to-minute basis across the city. And as it relates to businesses, individual businesses, we will respond when there's a threat to public safety in any context, including as it relates to issues around, you know, the vaccination or proof of vaccination. If those engagements escalate to a point where there's a concern regarding public safety or community safety, then, of course, we would respond accordingly. So, our ability to respond organizationally as a priority response element is something we do day in and day out, hour to hour, minute by minute, frankly, on all spectrum of safety concerns. This is another potential element of safety concern, is when those encounters in our communities that can be challenging escalate to a point where there's a concern for public safety, then we would be a resource. We reply in priority as we would to other public safety concerns.
Thank you very much, deputy.
Thank you. Counselor Fletcher.
Thank you. I have a question for the city staff and then our deputy. And the first one is, what if there is a anti-vax protest called for a park? Of course, there's no permit. What steps would you take? And I guess that's for Ms. Romoff or the deputy city manager, or the city manager who I'm looking at with this.
Through, so I'm here through the speaker.
Oh, you're there.
Yeah, I am. Sorry, I'm just putting my video on. So, you're correct, through the speaker to Counselor Fletcher, there are no permits that are issued for protests in parks or squares. And I think there's a lot of work, I mean, the deputy chief can probably respond as well, that a lot of work that's done on social media and the rest, trying to identify where some of these events take place. And then, you know, the Toronto Police are really the lead in dealing with any of the activity that would take place.
So, if it's in a park, since there's nothing there and you're advised of that, then do you get in touch directly with Toronto Police?
It could be either way. Quite often, Toronto Police have the same information that we do, and it's not generally a surprise when these events are known. And, I mean, the deputy chief can speak to it more specifically, but Toronto Police generally plans, you know, for the events that are known.
Yes. I guess I'm just asking if that's recorded and tracked, that you have major, you officially said there is no permit.
I'm not sure if it's officially, through the speaker, recorded and tracked. I know our policy is that we do not issue permits for protests of any sort in any of our city facilities.
Did you find out there's a protest in a park, and you know there's not going to be a permit? Would you advise, who would you advise in the police?
I couldn't tell you specifically, Counselor. It's quite often done at the field level when these things are discovered. And a lot of those conversations are just, you know, the ongoing sort of discussions that happen in various parts of the city when these activities take place.
So, now I will just go to the deputy, who I can't see on there, but I know he's there somewhere. And just, you've heard that question, deputy, that if there is a known protest, there are no permits for parks? And if there is anti-vaxxers are saying they're going to come to disrupt a business district or go into a park where there's a business district, what steps would we expect that Toronto Police would take around that, please?
Thank you, Counselor, and I'll grab my hand up if you can see me on the screen there.
I can't, I can't see you, sorry.
Okay. I will, I would offer this as a reply. One of the tenants that we have really worked hard to adhere to is to consider things around people's lawful right to express themselves and finding a balance between their constitutional right of expression and our duty to maintain the peace and public safety. So, we will certainly, we certainly are in touch with city staff when appropriate and support city staff in anything to do with what would be a city area of consideration. But what we also do is prepare and respond in accordance with what we believe may be the threat, if there is any, or the safety concerns that may exist, particularly when protests go mobile or, you know, get into traffic or impede traffic, that we want to make sure that we do what we can to maintain the safety of all during those protests. So, a typical response would be a local divisional engagement with our Community Response Unit officers, particularly downtown, who are extremely well-trained in issues surrounding protests and managing crowds and crowd dynamics. And we would do an assessment, if time permitted, on what information's available and whether we need to change our posture beyond what's available to us resource-wise. We would plan accordingly based on the information and intelligence we had, with a view to making sure that things were as peaceful as possible, that there was no violations of criminal statutes and the like.
But if there's no permit, then that's already a violation, isn't it?
Well, that'd be something we would talk to city staff about and how the city staff would want to see that managed. But, you know, there is a balance to strike with respect to people's charter right of expression, and we certainly have seen from time to time in the past months where people's desire to express themselves took place, and we do what we can to make sure, ensure public safety during those times.
Thank you.
Right, I did get him, my done?
That was your last question.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Layton?
Yes, thank you very much, Deputy Chief. Earlier in your, in your response to Counselor Ford, you said, "Yeah, you're looking to keep things peaceful and respectful." The reports that I'm hearing, and I have a protest in Ward eleven every week on Saturday, goes in different directions, as I'm sure you know, but goes in different directions. The reports that we're getting is that it passed, it passed a harassment months ago, and we have individuals shouting obscenities at children, standing beside businesses, trying to force people off their, off their patios because they've been outspoken about vaccine mandates. At what point, like, where is that line of respectful in your mind, or legally, where we actually can intervene and do something about the, about the behavior of some of these protesters?
Well, let me, thank you for that, and let me say this. And if I use the term respectful, I would prefer to focus on peaceful, because clearly our officers have been subjected to very disrespectful behavior as of members of the public, yet they show great restraint and maintain the peace and ensure public safety, which is our focus. I would not condone or otherwise call what you described, Mr. Layton, as something that is respectful, the way you described it. What I would say is that our primary function is to maintain public safety and keep the peace. The expressions that take place during those moments are at times difficult, but our function is to ensure that hospital operations continue, that they're not impeded, and that the peace is maintained. And the reporting I have is that that has taken place, in fact, successfully.
So, can you give us an idea? And I asked for this statistic some time ago, and I haven't gotten an updated one, but how many charges have been laid for organizing these protests, public health-wise or otherwise? How many charges have been laid? And how is it that the same individuals that are charged end up back at these protests week after week after week? Like, I know some have been charged, and yet they continue to do the same behavior. What is it? What's wrong here?
Well, I'm not going to reflect on what's motivating people to behave repeatedly a certain way.
Fair enough.
What I will say is that when we do have a lawful authority and it's appropriate to exercise that authority, we do so. The fact is, is some of the charges evolved over time due to emergency measures. They may not all be the same in effect now. I'd have to get a list of the charges you are perhaps referencing to better or more succinctly answer your question. But when there is concerns around public safety and concerns around the safety of the community and/or access to essential services, then our officers exercise the authorities available to them and take the appropriate steps, given the circumstances they're facing.
And do you have any, any data about how many organizers of these protests have been, have had charges laid against them over the last sort of year that they've escalated?
I don't have that in front of me. That may be something.
Fair enough, fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Cole, question? Counselor Cole. Counselor Cole, turn off your video.
Turn your mic.
Okay. Counselor Cole, can you hear me? Counselor Cole, turn your camera back on and unmute, unmute your mic. Okay. Counselor Wong-Tam, questions?
Thank you very much, ma'am, Speaker. And Counselor Cole, I could hear you. I'm not sure if anybody else could, just so you know. Through you, ma'am, Speaker, and thank you very much, officer, for joining us tonight. It's really great to have you here. I'm just curious to know, following up on actually Counselor Layton's point of view, especially his observations about the weekly protests, he and I actually share a boundary, literally just right down the street off of Young. And, and so, I'm just trying to understand, because I've had numerous conversations with the local leadership of fifty-one division, who is exceptional to work with, but I'm perplexed on how the, the weekly protests can come in every Saturday, and what they've essentially done is terrorize the downtown neighborhood, including walking into shops, threatening workers and shopkeepers, threatening customers, yelling at them to remove their mask, and sometimes, you know, leading to physical altercation. I'm just curious to know, because what, what the observations are from, from community members is that they see the police standing by and sort of escorting them down the street but not intervening, even when they see the line being drawn. So, can you explain to us when a police officer may determine it be their job to step in to stop a physical altercation?
Thank you for that. You know, frankly, your question to me is a little bit difficult because it's dealing with an abstract without a specific, you know, set of facts to review. You know, the expectation I would have of police officers in Toronto is that when a physical altercation is imminent, that steps will be taken to preserve the peace. That is their function. That is their purpose in those times. So, the expectation I'd have is that physical altercations would be something that our police officers would be intervening and, and taking action on.
So, when an officer sees a physical altercation or at least escalating words and perhaps body language, that, that, that pretty much dictates that the next move is somebody striking somebody or shoving someone or touching somebody, is that when they intervene? Or do they, do they intervene beforehand? Because we've heard a number of concerns, especially, you know, especially in the big shoppers' drug marts, to be quite honest, that that has been happening right inside the stores, is that there's a group of individuals that will come in or one or two very loud and belligerent individuals come in, and, and everything is disrupted. Can you, and it's also predictable, because they're going into the same shops over and over again, to the point that even shop owners are having a hard time staffing because they're nervous about their employees or customers getting assaulted.
Right, right. Again, I think your example, just the way you were describing it, I think speaks to the difficulty of answering the question, which is, you know, assaulted behavior versus body language versus words. Our officers are trained in how to manage these situations, they're trained in de-escalate Our officers are trained in how to manage these situations, they're trained in de-escalation, they're trained in dealing with things that are escalating, and I'd expect their response to be appropriate to the individual circumstances they're facing. So when it is assaulted behavior, then I'd expect that there's something our officers are doing for sure to deal with assaulted behavior. You know, other than, other than the language used by people, as was referenced earlier, and how people communicate, you know, our officers have to exercise a great amount of restraint and composure to make sure that they are abiding by their legal obligations to maintain the peace while striking a balance of ensuring people, in the case of protest, have a, their right to express themselves, exercise. So I think the difficulty I have with, with being more specific, Counselor, is, is assaulted behavior to me means assaulted behavior. And when there's assaulted behavior, I expect the police officers in Toronto would engage.
Thank you. My final question is actually for yourself, or even the city solicitor. Around abortion clinics, there's oftentimes the safety zone that's established, so therefore you can't obstruct someone from walking into getting a medical procedure or, or, or medical service. Is, is what is proposed right now, the, the motion that's on the floor, how likely is it that, that you will come back with, with some tools for us to, to implement that will create these new safety zones around the areas, around, especially around healthcare institutions?
Last question.
Through you, Madam Speaker. Well, we'll certainly have a look at, at this if asked. I, I do want to be clear at the outset, though, that this is the kind of thing that provincial government has much better tools to implement than a municipal council does. And, and in fact, the, the zones that you're speaking of were put in place by the provincial government, as was the zone in Kirkpatrick around healthcare and educational institutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Cole?
Madam Speaker, Counselor Grimes, I can hear him very well. I think the problem's on your end, Madam Speaker.
Yes, I, I can't hear a thing.
You can all hear him. I think the problem might be on your end.
The else can hear him.
Okay, well.
Mike, just go ahead.
Sorry, we can't hear him on the live stream. You cannot?
We can hear him on the live stream. Okay, well, I'm going to have to continue because, you know, yeah, there's not much I can do. Yeah, we're going to look into the problem and hopefully we'll get back. Counselor Holliday, question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Maybe we can get Counselor Cole over the phone. We, we all can hear that he's quite eager to ask some questions from where we sit. Anyways, my, my question is for Deputy Demke. The motion before us in its written form here just says, number one, says something about a rapid response protocol for addressing harassment and intimidation of frontline healthcare workers, small business owners, and on and on. My question is, does the words harassment and intimidation in this context, so protesters demonstrating, do they, does, do those words have a specific meaning in law? And this just goes on some of the discussion that we've had about police stepping in when it escalates to a, a point of violence or assault, but do those words have a specific meaning, especially for a call taker on 911, maybe, that's trying to assess the situation?
Thank you for that. So I'll, yes, they can have a specific meaning in law. I would defer, of course, to City Legal for, you know, more, but for sure, they can. Harassment is, you know, found within the criminal code, intimidation is found within the criminal code, and I'm, I'm sure in other statutes. So I think, I think that's something I would defer for legal counsel to, you know, delve into in more detail. But yes, they can have a meaning, a legal meaning.
I had my mute there. Before we, we go to legal, could you just maybe give the comment, is there a protocol to deal with a telephone call where somebody says, "I'm being harassed"?
Like, like any call, our dispatchers are trained to ask questions of the caller to get to the facts and better understand what the call is about. As has happened even today, you know, the language used to describe a set of events can be different from individual to individual. So our call takers are trained to delve into the details with the caller to better understand what the call is about. So in, in all circumstances, this would also apply in these types that you're asking about.
Okay, and then you would have a process to deal with those, to, to connect that with the local response, right? You've got the 911 center unpacking the issue verbally, and then there's a process to go through downstream.
Right, so that, so they effectively identify the nature of the call and then put it in a priority, and we have a prioritization process for, for the purpose of just, you know, ease of understanding what I mean by that. Obviously, somebody who's been shot and is bleeding is a very clearly understood high priority. Something around lost property would be of a far lesser priority. So they, they certainly would take whatever information on any given call is provided and put it into that kind of framework, and then we would be dispatched accordingly.
Okay, thank you. And maybe I'll follow up with City Legal about those two words. So the, the installation or the, the position of those words in the motion are very, 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 very distinct, right? They, they identify two things in, in the context of a protest. Do you have any advice to counsel about how we might understand what those mean? Because I know, you know, harassment is a, is a fairly broad thing, right? You know, that, there's so many situations, but in this case, is that something that is workable or usable in this particular motion?
You know, I would say that as a starting point, they're, they're fine, those words. I, what I want to say, though, is in, in context, the police, generally speaking, would allow a peaceful protest to continue. People have a right to peacefully protest. If the conduct of the protesters crossed a line, though, and elements of an offense were present, then the police, as enforcement officers, seeing those elements could take steps to press charges. And, and as you've heard, both harassment and intimidation are under the criminal code offenses, so you would have to look to the, you know, the wording and determine whether the elements were there.
Okay, but would it also be fair to say that...
Thank you, Counselor Holliday. Your time's up.
Okay.
Counselor Matlow?
Thank you. Deputy, you're right. So, so rather than speaking the abstract, I want to give you a, a particular incident that, that I don't understand why more action was taken, and I wonder what the police's protocol is in this circumstance. So in August, restaurant owner Jen Ag reported that her restaurant, Rum Corn Run Dundas at Grace, had been repeatedly, for weeks, visited by protesters who harassed her and her customers. And this would go on for hours and hours and hours. These protesters were beating drums and pans. They called her a Nazi, they called her a bigot, they called her all sorts of other just disgusting and pejorative terms. And this is somebody who, like every restaurateur, was just trying to, you know, just struggled to survive, given what everyone's been through the last couple of years. She complained not only that the city was, in, in her view, initially was obtuse to, to, to what was going on, but she also complained that police were present but stood by and did nothing. So, you know, given that there were just so many repeated and such obvious incidents of harassment of both the clientele and the restaurant owner, what is the protocol for the police in those circumstances? And, and, and if you can, just, why, why wouldn't, why wouldn't that be, why wouldn't that be the threshold?
Thank you for that, sir. Counselor, I think...
I'm, I'm sorry, Deputy, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I, I'd like to remind members of council, please ask questions on the members' motion that we have before us protecting healthcare workers.
That...
Please, because we're getting... Just, just ask questions on the motion you have before you.
Thank you, Mike. I'm, I'm speaking, I'm asking a question very, very specifically on the motion.
Okay. What you have before you, the healthcare workers.
No, Madam Speaker, if, to read the motion, it does include... With all due respect, I have a question on the floor, and I'd appreciate an answer if the deputy is willing to.
Counselor, yes, absolutely, I'll answer. Again, without being on the ground, these are individual circumstances that the officers face. The expectation would be they would conduct an investigation, given the totality of the information before them. The issue of harassment, criminal harassment charges, you know, there are elements of that, of offense that have to be available for investigators to form reasonable and probable grounds to effect an arrest. And if those elements are not there, they're not there. I'd expect it'd be an investigation by the local police to determine if the elements of the offense are met for an individual, and if there are appropriate opportunities to lay charges, that the charges would be laid when appropriate. The fact of people protesting out front of various parts of the city, you know, that, again, it's, it's striking that balance of, of people have a right to express themselves as they do in, in the square in front of City Hall on a regular basis. And, and they do, from time to time, move around while they express themselves, and our job is to keep the peace and to ensure public and community safety. And when it comes to the issues around harassment or criminal harassment, there are elements of the offense that have to be met.
Deputy, what, what you're describing, though, isn't, isn't what I, what I put before you. We understand if it's roaming, that might be a different context. I understand, I, I support people's ability to, you know, express their charter rights and express their opinions. I'm speaking about a very, very specific incident where, you know, for weeks and weeks and weeks, this restaurateur and her clients were inarguably, I mean, there's video of it, everyone's seen it, were, were harassed, and, and quite, quite awfully. And I don't understand just the threshold, the protocol, for when, when, when the police believe it's reasonable to intervene. And I just wonder if you can explain sort of what, why didn't that meet the test and what is the test?
Well, I, I think one of the elements, one of the offenses to consider is whether they, an individual meets the criteria for grounds, for the officers to form the grounds to believe an offense took place regarding criminal harassment, for example. And if those grounds do not exist, if the individual circumstances of the event do not warrant that, then there's, there's not a ton of available opportunities for the police to do something other than to do their lawfully obligated right, lawfully obligated duty to keep the peace.
So if somebody goes into a, to, like, goes to a restaurant and starts banging pans and calling people Nazis, and, and that, that wouldn't be considered, that, that wouldn't meet the test of, of intervention?
That was your last question.
Again, there's, there's other available, legal, perhaps mechanisms available, depending on the circumstances. But, you know, this is individual, case-by-case based, and the expectation would be that on an individual, case-by-case, the officers would conduct an appropriate assessment of the circumstances and respond appropriately, whatever the legal statutory framework that's available to them. And, you know, we're talking about criminal harassment, there could be trespass to property, act, statutory, you know, things to consider, but those are all determined on a case-by-case basis on individual circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pasternak?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to, I guess, Deputy, Deputy Chief, Demke, the, the right to assemble is, is obviously a sacred right, but the, the charter describes it as peaceful protest. Would you agree that, that a protest can, can continue as long as it's peaceful? So I'm going to give you a scenario. Back in May, there were a series of anti-Israel protests. They took over Dundas Square, a few days before, they took over Nathan Phillips Square. I've been shown a number of videos where, where there was the call for the wiping out of the State of Israel with the genocide, the killing of Jews, and then I was sent a series of videos in which a small group of Jewish people were, were attacked. And, and I must say, regrettably, the complaints that I got, that police were nearby and didn't really know what to do. And that's sort of the trend in this whole discussion here, is that when these things get out of control and, and, and they can't be contained, and they're no longer peaceful protests, there seems to be a paralysis or reluctance for officers to, to get involved. Now, I understand de-escalation, but do you think there has to be a whole reassessment of, of how we handle, how we secure peaceful protests, but how we handle a protest that, that turned into violent mobs?
Counselor, thank you for that question. Each and every time we have a significant event like that in the city, the Toronto Police do review the circumstances of their response, our engagement with our partners and our communities, and we seek opportunities to make sure that we're adjusting our ability to respond to events as, as they unfold. So, sorry, I heard somebody, somebody chiming in there, Counselor.
Well, I just, I just, sorry, we need to stick to what we have before us. Please. We're gonna be here all night. Like, let's stick to the motion. Counselor Pasternak?
Let's let the... Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Let's let the officer finish, and then I'll move on to other...
Okay, sorry, Deputy, go ahead.
Thank you. So we do, we do assess our response to major events, both before and after the fact, and, and we assess, you know, how we responded, what lessons are learned, what operational lessons are learned, and the like. So in the circumstances you're describing, that certainly would be the case. So the assessment happens after major events, sir, is, is the...
Right. So in, in, in this day and age, I mean, I, we sent everything to police, all the videos and pictures, and, and it was just a trove of evidence with people's images.
Point of, point of order, Madam Speaker, to my good friend, Counselor Pasternak. We're getting off topic.
Counselor Grimes, point of order. I have been saying it all night.
Okay, but we're getting off topic, my friend, Counselor Pasternak. Counselor Ford's sitting in the backyard in the dark, he's getting scared, we gotta get this meeting over with. Thank you.
Please, on the motion that we have before us.
All right, I think my questions are done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll come over, Counselor Ford, if you need me, okay? If you're getting a little worried out there in the dark, I'll come over to help you.
Counselor Cole, can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, again, thank you very much, Deputy. One of these days, we'll get back to real meetings, but we've got these virtual meetings, it seems forever. But I, I, you're in a tough spot, so I'm not gonna think you're going to be able to solve all these problems, because you can see, in my motion, I'm asking not only to sit down with... only, uh, to sit down with, uh, City Legal and sit down with the city manager, but also to sit down with, uh, you know, your officers, to see if there can be a way of better handling these unprecedented, uh, violent protests that have occurred, uh, in our city over the last number of months. You think that would be helpful?
Counselor, I welcome a meeting with you anytime, on any number of topics. Uh, and in all seriousness, I think anytime we can engage, uh, in, in progressive dialogue, um, in how we respond, um, then we, I would certainly participate in that.
Yes, and, uh, a- as, uh, you all know, this has been the most unusual of times. I, I certainly have never seen hospitals under siege, uh, pharmacies, uh, you know, our nurses have been told not to come to work in their scrubs or uniforms because they might be attacked. I, I mean, have you ever seen, uh, our hospitals or healthcare workers threatened as they have been in the last number of months?
I think what's important, uh, that I, uh, frame in my response to your question, Counselor, is of course, um, you know, threats of any of the kind of that nature, uh, broadly against a segment of our community that is delivering an essential service is not something that, um, is the norm in our society, thankfully. Uh, but I think, uh, the other part I, I would want to make sure is clearly understood, is our engagement with hospital staff, um, both from a security perspective and their management and their, uh, senior leadership, uh, has been maintained throughout. Uh, we've been responsive to their concerns and their expressions as it relates to maintaining their operations. So I think, uh, I think to answer your question, it has to be, I'd have to offer the broader context of, of how we've responded, uh, in being responsive to the needs of the hospital, given the circumstances.
You know, this is again, this is secondhand, but I've been told that, uh, repeatedly, these anti-vaxxers have gone into Women's College Hospital and, uh, interrupted the, uh, vaccination clinics there. The, uh, officials inside the vaccination clinic phone the police and there's no response from the police.
I, I don't have that information before me, Counselor, so I, I really can't comment on that.
Another doctor told me that, uh, surgeries had to be delayed at some of our, uh, the, uh, Toronto Health Network there because of the protest. Have you dealt with surgeries being delayed?
Specific to protests, I have not understood that to have happened. Uh, the information I have that is, our engagement has been, um, robust, um, in that we have, uh, dealt with the protesters in, in an effective way.
But that, and then there's another case where a, an ER doctor had to come outside of his, uh, emergency room to basically with a sign saying, please let me save lives. I mean.
But Counselor Cole, I don't, I don't believe the Deputy Chief can answer that question.
What's that?
No, um, you're asking questions that the Deputy Chief would not have an answer for and giving you incidents that happen at the hospital. But if you want to just talk about your motion, because it would be difficult for the Deputy Chief.
That's my motion, to protect the healthcare workers, doctors and nurses.
No, but you're asking the Deputy Chief if he's aware of incidents that have happened at the hospital. I don't believe he would have that answer.
Okay, thank you, I'll move on to another question then. The other question is, I've had, you know, part of my motion talks about, uh, you know, like Counselor Matlow talked about, uh, and Counselor Wong-Tam, about retail workers in pharmacies being stopped from working. I've had young, uh, staff members at the submarine shop on Dufferin, uh, crying because they were under threat from an anti-vaxxer who came into the submarine shop, pulled out all the cables, wires, pushed the staff members, and they called 911, the police did not come.
Okay, that was your last question. Deputy?
So I, I, I think, Counselor, I, I don't necessarily understand completely what you're asking, other than, uh, to make a comment that, uh, our calls are prioritized. And if, if a police officer did not come, um, in the moment that this happened, um, you know, our calls are taken into our call center prioritized and officers are dispatched, uh, in accordance, uh, with, with, you know, the priorities that exist at the time in the city. Uh, so, um, the specifics of a call we didn't get to, uh, there's any number of explanations why we wouldn't get to a call. You know, uh, some of them being that, uh, other priority calls may have come in and put those in queue.
Thank you.
Without, again, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to speakers. Counselor Ford.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I'll, and I'll keep my comments, uh, relatively short as we're getting late into the night here. But look, I, I want to thank, uh, Counselor Cole and Counselor Carroll for putting this motion forward. I think it's a very constructive motion. I think, um, you know, what we have seen as a council and the demonstrations with these anti-vaccination protests are, are, um, ugly at best, uh, to just categorize that. But you know what, the, these situations that are coming up is incredibly difficult situations. And, and we're hearing that from, uh, the Deputy Chief in how Toronto Police have been trying to, uh, adapt and, and keep public safety for everyone. Um, and, you know, while there, there are these one-off stories, and, and there are many of them, you know, we are a, a city of, um, you know, three, four million people. Um, the, these things sadly will happen and it doesn't make it right. But, um, as one member of the Toronto Police Services Board, um, I know we can update every month on this. And the service, uh, has been working, uh, around the clock, uh, to effectively, um, and with tight resources, um, respond to these, uh, these, uh, mass protests are happening across our city, particularly, um, in the downtown. And I feel for the downtown communities, um, and, uh, in, in the downtown councillors that have to deal with this, because i- it is not right. Um, and, and I can only imagine how challenging that is. But needless to say, you know, I'll, I'll kind of wrap my comments there, but, you know, thank the officers for, and the work they have done, um, in very difficult situations. I have seen dozens and dozens of dozens of videos of whether it's police officers getting assaulted, uh, members of the public getting assaulted, uh, children witnessing this. Um, it's a, it's a sad state of affair, but I do have the utmost faith, um, uh, in the Toronto Police Service and, and working to address these issues. Um, and definitely support, uh, the motion looking at safety zones. I was going to actually amend the motion, I didn't have time to, to request the provincial government to look at this. But it's something that conversations need to have, uh, be had, and I definitely support, um, having them. Uh, so, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Perks.
Thank you, Pete, uh, thank you, Speaker. I've been struggling with this, I've been struggling with this a lot, particularly part two of the motion, which asks to look at safety zones. One of the things I'm mindful of is that there has been over the last few years, a very live conversation about, uh, what kind of protests get least and which way. You'll recall shortly, uh, two years ago, uh, we were very concerned about, uh, how protests support, uh, in reaction to the death of George Floyd and Regis Porczynski-Pickett in my ward were policed. More recently, there's been concern about how, uh, encampments were policed. I think we run into a, a risk when city council starts saying, this kind of protest is one we want the police to police and that one isn't. Is very deliberate, very deliberate in law, that we establish standards of behavior in the criminal code and say, these, these kinds of behaviors are not allowed at any protest. And it doesn't become a matter of politicians saying, this kind of protest, that kind of protest, this individual, that individual. When you move the police and the state too close together, you get the phrase, police state. I want to remind you also, of the most recent time, there has been a safety zone in the city of Toronto. It was during the G7, G20. How did that work out? How did Torontonians feel about that? How did the subsequent legal cases? What, what did they teach us? I'm all for, all for this council asking the question, are you applying the same standard in all instances? And asking the police service, uh, to review how they've behaved in a variety of circumstances. But saying we should grant the police an additional power? I can't do, I can't go there. The city solicitor made it very clear, whether it's hate speech, where there are threats, where there is violence, or where there is trespass and the property owner calls the police, the police already have the tools to protect our healthcare workers, our healthcare institutions, and the people trying to access them. If they weren't adequately policed, that was a choice, and we need to understand how that choice was made. That's fair. But creating a new set of powers opens us to a very, very dangerous world. During the questioning of the Deputy Chief, the Speaker had to intervene several times because members of council were saying, well, what about this other protest that I didn't approve of? What about the protest of queers against Israeli apartheid? I didn't approve of that protest, why wasn't it more vigorously policed? Despite the fact that Toronto City staff said that those protests were within freedom of expression laws. We go down a dangerous road. We're also at a point where we're considering pilots right now to reduce the number of areas that we hand off to the police. The police tell us we give them too many jobs. So let's not go continuously saying, hey, do more, more, and more, and we'll give you more and more and more and more powers. The powers that were necessary to deal with these protests already exist, the city solicitor told you that. So I can vote for parts one and three, I cannot vote for the second part.
Thank you. Counselor Cole.
Yeah, it's sort of ironic. Here we are, we're deploying, uh, bylaw officers, police officers to enforce our public health rules in playgrounds, uh, when people were using swings, yet we're not able to have protection for doctors and nurses, or people, uh, PSWs, uh, who are trying to deliver, uh, vaccines? Is that what we're saying? That we can't do that, yet we can do it in playgrounds? So I think there's a kind of a double standard here that we're applying, and, you know, at least you take public health seriously or you don't. And I think, uh, the work of our doctors and nurses, uh, is, uh, an essential service. The police agree with that. So for us to say, well, now we've got to look at the whole constitutionality of protests and the, you know, Plato's interpretation of what a real protest is, you know, we've got a dangerous situation here, where there has been, day after day, there's been systematic intimidation, harassment, uh, denial of people's right to even work, uh, as a result of these very aggressive, very, uh, uh, unusual forms of protesters that we've never seen the likes of before. And if we look the other way and not ask the police and our legal team to look at ways where maybe the city could do something more to protect our frontline workers, especially our medical workers, what are we doing here? You know, because the public is really frustrated. They say, why is this all going on, uh, in our city and nobody seems to be doing anything about it? Then they blame the police. And as we know, it's not, as Counselor Ford said, the police have an incredibly tough job. Incredibly tough job, it's not their fault, but we've got to sit down and try to deal with this new reality we see on our streets. As Counselor Leighton said, Counselor Wong-Tam, every Saturday they're doing this, you know, in a way to intimidate, harass, stop people from going about their peaceful business. As Counselor Matlow said, about what that restaurant owner had to go through day after day and nobody helped her. Nobody helped her. Talk about losing the confidence of people. And as I said, the case that really got me going is the young black workers up at the submarine shop that were in tears, saying, why didn't they come, why didn't the police come and help us? Why didn't they help us when this guy was pushing us around and calling his names and all this? And we called the police three or four times, nobody came. Then I had the case on Young Street, where the proprietor of a local coffee shop, who was a COVID-19 survivor, he was on a ventilator for three months. He comes back to the coffee shop and he gets attacked by these anti-vaxxer protests that ran right into his shop. He called the police, 911, repeatedly, nobody came. So are we to sit on our hands and say, oh, well, uh, this is, uh, you know, Plato's interpretation of, uh, free, freedom of speech and, uh, protest? We don't want to, I, I think the people of Toronto want us to be reasonable, and we always have been reasonable, working with the police, trying to find way of protecting our frontline, especially our healthcare workers, who don't deserve to be, uh, stopped from going to work because they're wearing nurses outfits, or the doctors have to come outside of hospitals and ask for protection so they can operate. This is what this has come to, as we sit idly by and watch this go on week after week after week. I think we need to be intelligent and rational and find a way of improving, uh, public protection and the protection especially of our healthcare workers, who don't deserve to be, uh, attacked by these very, very aggressive individuals who are above and beyond what we've ever seen before. That in Toronto's history, we've never seen our healthcare workers, our hospitals under siege? When have we ever seen this? It's about time we did something, and I'm saying, let's try and find a way of exploring ways of helping resolve this very, very dangerous situation that, uh, again, threatens the health and public health of people in Toronto. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Matlow to speak.
Madam Speaker, before you begin my time, uh, I just have a point of order, uh, just a request. Would you ask, uh, the deputy, uh, before he goes away, or if you could spend the next couple of minutes making sure that, that he, he knows that his presence would be appreciated, to come back for MM 36.25? And then if you'd be so kind to start my time again, because it's still running.
Yeah, he's left the meeting. So Counselor Matlow, do you want to speak on this item?
So, uh, would you, would you endeavor to, to either have him back or, or, or representative of the TPS on that item?
Counselor Matlow, do you want to speak on this item?
Yes, but I'm making a request, uh.
Yes, I understand you're making a request, and I'm telling you that the Deputy Chief has left.
I, I, I hear you, I'm just, if, uh, Madam Speaker, I'm just making a request that, that if he's not available, if we could endeavor to have a representative of the TPS.
I'll get back, I'll get back to you. Do you want to speak on this item? Do you want to speak on this item, please?
Madam Speaker, I'm just trying to finish this sentence, a basic request, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I would like to speak on this item.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So I want to begin by, uh, thanking Counselor Cole for moving this forward. What he is moving, uh, I believe reflects what the vast majority of Torontonians, um, have been thinking, uh, for quite some time. And I also think it's a very well-written motion. If, if, if members, you know, read it, uh, you'll see that Counselor Cole, I, I think was very thoughtful in how he approached this. He's asking for a rapid response protocol for addressing harassment, intimidation of frontline healthcare workers, small business owners, and frontline retail employees. That's, that's. That's why I was speaking to what Genag's experience was. And what councillor Cole is asking for is simply a real clarification and a real plan to address what is the threshold for intervention, how best to intervene, to make sure that retailers and healthcare workers alike, frontline workers, don't have to put up with this harassment. Councillor Cole is not saying that he doesn't believe in freedom of speech. He's not suggesting that there shouldn't be protests when peaceful protests come about. But he is asking us to support his request to protect those who should not be targeted with harassment. And I think that is a very reasonable request. He's also made it very clear that when he's describing safe zones around healthcare facilities, that it's about protecting these facilities from any delays, from what he writes, regular and critical functioning of these facilities. There should not be operations delayed. There should not be any impediment for a nurse, or a doctor, or anybody working in a hospital from getting to work and doing their job to save lives. That is just the most reasonable request that anyone can make. And, you know, just a little while ago, we were beating pots and pans, celebrating our frontline workers and our healthcare workers. And, you know, one way to really stand by our commitment and our support for them, along with celebrating them and beating pans and all these things that symbolically tell them that we've got their backs, is to request that if they are being targeted with harassment, that we still have their backs, and that we won't allow that to happen. But we need to understand what is that threshold? Because what Torontonians have experienced is that every weekend, these protests happen. And again, it's not the protest. It's the behaviour in the protest. The harassment, the abusive behaviour towards individuals, whether they be walking down the street, or in Genag's case, to her in particular, calling her deplorable names, making it so difficult for somebody who's just trying to get their restaurant up and running again, to deal with the reality of having people coming and harassing their clients, their customers? This is not acceptable. So councillor Cole's motion is, I believe, reflects what Torontonians want us to do. It asks for clarity about when the police, with all due respect, shouldn't just be standing there, but intervening to protect the peace? Because we saw videos of the police standing there, and people have asked, like, why was that? So let's have clarity. Let's have a clear, a clear understanding of when that intervention takes place. And then lastly, the way that councillor Cole wrote this is one of collaboration, of respect, and really focuses in on what Torontonians are expecting us to do. So again, congratulations councillor Cole for, I believe, representing a lot of people out there with this motion. And I do hope that we support his request. Thank you.
Councillor Holliday to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I just want to take a moment to express my appreciation and gratitude for the work of the Toronto Police Service. These are exceptionally difficult situations. I don't think we on this call, or the general public, and I count myself in that, we probably don't understand 1% of the amount of work that goes into planning, policing, these type of activities that go on, and the amount of information that's put into that and data that goes behind it. But I think we can all relate to at least a story or two, and I won't repeat them because they cast such a negative light of where we were in a crowd, where things were about to go bad really fast. You know, think of things, big events, where something bad happened. You know, you mix in drugs or alcohol, or you mix in something that could be turned into a weapon. And it doesn't make the job easy. And I think many members of the police have been doing this as a profession all their life. They understand people, they understand these situations. And I think we need to trust them on how they work through them because of how these situations can change so quickly. You know, the one thing I have heard in this call, it's not a crime to be obnoxious. There are people that do awful things in this city. They say awful things. But at some point, they do cross the line, and they do become criminal in nature. And I really encourage people to call that in and put some trust into the system of response. I think it's really important to make sure that we articulate exactly what's going on so that the police can assess the situation and get the right resource out there. We all know from experience on any type of a service request like that, it doesn't always work out. But I've always felt in situations like these, it's just like, and it's not on the same scale, but when you report somebody that's speeding in a location, you know, we'd love to see a police officer there, write them a ticket right on the spot. But I always take some positive thinking out of that, that the kind of individual that behaves obnoxiously like some of these examples, it's not the first time, it's not the last. But if enough people keep reporting it and getting the information to the police, eventually they are going to get caught. And the price will be high when they're charged for, you know, a crime. So I just, maybe all my message is not only of gratitude for the people that worked through this, but just people's patience. And I think they should do the best they can to use the system that we've got before us because, you know, it will add up to something over time. And I hope they've got faith in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Leighton to speak.
Yes, thank you very much, madam speaker. I think, just picking up on one of councillor Holliday's points about that there's a line here between protest and harassment, that I appreciate a delicate one, and one that may have different definitions for different people on this call, based on our background, from the deputy chief to some of us. But, look, I was born with a protest sign in my hand. Maybe some of you were as well. My first protest was under 10 years old to help close the Commissioner's Street incinerator before we had blue boxes. Went on to protest with family and friends at Queen's Park, at Nathan Phillips Square, consulates, company headquarters, you name it, right? But this, there was different. There's differences of opinion, and there's a different stance. And then there's where you don't see people, like, you see people that are angry, that are passionate, that are upset. But it doesn't cross that line to harass, randomly harassing people on the street for wearing a mask or yelling at kids in line to get vaccinated. And using language in front of young children that certainly shouldn't be used by anyone in our community. There, there's a certain point in time when those individuals cross that line. And it seems to happen with regular, regularly with respect to these anti-mask, anti-lockdown protests. I get calls on a weekly basis. Typically, the protests rotate around Ward 11. And I know that they touch on councillor Wong-Tam's ward as well, and councillor Cressy's. But regularly, of threatening behaviour, of harassing behaviour, and it's indiscriminate. Now, we heard from councillor Madlo, where it was regularly targeting one business for standing up and saying, this is what I believe. And hurt her business when she was just trying to get it started back up. Fortunately, the community rose up and went and supported her all the same. verging on dangerous. And we've let it get to that point, that these individuals feel emboldened to go that far. Because, you know, despite the fact that charges are late, the same individual organising the protest the week before are out at the next protest organising it again. And this is where it comes into play, when it starts getting to the point that they're not only, not only putting themselves at risk by avoiding all public health measures and vaccinations, but in fact, getting in the way of other people seeking support. We know that there are other times when this has been done around abortion clinics. I think that this is the bare minimum that we would never want to take with... Don't think that's the case here. What we're doing is trying to limit the auxiliary damage that these individuals seem not to care about. And they seem to be just doing at their own free will. And we have to, at least, looking out for some of our most vulnerable in this case, those going into the hospitals. I would say that earlier this week, there was a protest in front of a school. You know, my kids, I got two little kids in elementary school. I don't want them getting yelled at by anti-vaxxers when they're wearing their mask walking into their classroom. They shouldn't have to do that. We may have to take this further at some point, unfortunately. I hope that we don't. And I hope that it's quite clear from this, the message that we're sending, both those in bylaw enforcement and police enforcement, as well as those individuals coming out and harassing others for following public health measures. I hope it's quite clear that we're not going to tolerate it anymore.
Thank you. Councillor Grimes.
Thank you, madam speaker, and I'll be brief. Number one, I want to start off by commending the men and women of our police service, the great work they do on behalf of our city, day in and day out. Councillor Holliday said a lot of what I want to say. But I'll be supporting this motion. I just kind of want to touch on some of the stuff that councillor Cole brought up, and the poor two gentlemen, Mr Subshop. You know, I invite anybody to call Chief Raymer or the deputy, the good deputy who's on there today, and go on a Friday night down to councillor Leighton, councillor Cressy, or councillor Wong-Tam's ward, and go for a ride along. And you'll see those calls come in that the deputy talked about on the screen in the police car. And they range a whole gamut of calls that come in. So let's just take the two poor men that were getting harassed at the subway. But let's say there's domestic violence happening on. That takes priority over that call. They take all those calls, they put them in a sequence. What is more priority, you know, what's the priority? And we could have a thousand more officers on the street, not this council would copy, let that go through our massive police budget. But it's still not going to solve the problem. Like councillor Holliday said, you can't have a cop on every corner giving somebody a ticket. I get calls from my neighbourhood saying, you know, I called 911, I was breaking into my car in 3:00 in the morning, I called, they're not there. But I've been out on three ride-alongs in the last few years. And I think every councillor should go for a ride along to see what these men and women go through. No one's seen to be harassed, they support anyone you do to stop that. But, you know, it's a difficult job these men and women have. And you look at this council, the 26 of us were all senior officers, we showed up on a scene and how we would all handle that situation? You may have 26 different ways how you would handle it. Councillor Holliday may handle it differently than councillor Passanek. And councillor Cole may handle it different than I would. So sometimes it's a call on the scene. But I think, day in and day out, the men and women do a great job on our behalf. And remember, these men and women are our neighbours, our friends. They're just normal people like we are, that they just happen to wear a uniform. So those are my comments, madam chair. But I'm happy to support this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Wong-Tam.
Thank you very much, madam speaker. I do have a motion. If the clerk can please put that on the screen, if it's ready. Thank you very much, madam speaker. And I apologise to the movers of the motion I didn't have a chance to show to you beforehand. It was actually, I was inspired by some of the words from our city solicitor, that we should probably engage the province in this process, especially as it pertains to recreating, creating safe access zones around these facilities, the healthcare facilities. I'm not too sure exactly how quickly the province will act, because I know they have to act. And it's not like they haven't been asked, I suspect that they have. So I also don't want to take away the energy that staff are going to put into recommendation number two, which is to explore whether or not this can be done on our own. I suspect it can, because we, as a city, control and own and manage and operate all the roads and sidewalks. So somewhere within our limited municipal toolbox, I suspect we actually have one or two of those tools. Madam speaker, I just want to say very quickly, you know, I would generally agree with councillor Perks on a whole host of things. And especially as it pertains to his concerns about perhaps providing a little bit too much reach to the Toronto Police. In this case, I'm actually going to side in a different way. I have seen really the most horrific display of almost terrorism, like mob-style terrorism, take over our downtown streets every single weekend. And, madam speaker, it is really difficult and jarring for the business owners, as well as the healthcare workers. And as someone of Asian descent, I can tell you that, you know, there are times within our community, the Chinese community in particular, you know, we do not always feel safe walking down the streets with our mask. And yet we do it because we're following the health protocols. But there has been a very significant targeting of violence and anti-Asian hate crimes. We've seen that rise of this group that has sometimes targeted Asian people. So I want to make sure that we are at least doing everything we can to protect healthcare workers, doing everything we can to protect workers, shopkeepers. And there should be, under no circumstances should we be fooled in thinking that we can just let this go. And the reason being is because I don't think that the mob is going to let it go. I don't even want to call them protesters anymore in some cases because I just don't think that they are protesters. They have become, you know, they're white supremacist mobs. And this is the problem that I'm seeing in the town core. It's not just the freedom of writing and the freedom of assembly, is that they are legitimately coming, or they're illegitimately coming in, illegally coming in. And I believe they're terrorising our downtown neighbourhoods to the point that people have redirected their walking patterns. I have neighbours that won't leave their home in the afternoon. I know that there's certain places I can't push my baby stroller because I might be running into some group that is all jacked up on a lot of anger. And I know I can't keep my family safe. And that means my neighbours aren't safe. It means my neighbours who are working in those stores aren't safe. And we're hearing about this repeatedly. So thank you very much.
Okay, that's it for the speakers. One amendment, we'll put it on the screen. On favor, show of hands, carried on the item as amended.
Speaker, speaker! I'm sorry, but with these virtual meetings, it's hard to get it in time. I would like a recorded vote, please. And on the main motion, I would like two split out separately.
Okay.
The amendment carries, Speaker. The vote is 19 to 1.
Motion, councillor Perks has asked that we vote on one and two, and, sorry, one and three, and two separately. Correct, councillor Perks?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, so on the motion... Okay, we'll do two first.
Just stand by while we prepare the motion. Speaker, the part two of the item as amended carries, the vote is nineteen to one.
Balance, did you want a recorded vote?
Yes.
Speaker, the balance of the item as amended carries unanimously, twenty in favor.
Is MM 36.9, Counselor Holiday, you held the item down, expanded use of automated speed enforcement?
Thank you, Speaker. Questions of staff?
Counselor Holiday, you also held down MM 3615, which has to do with speed enforcement as well. Would you like to deal with both of them at the same time?
I was going to suggest that. My questions really are the same.
Okay, so Counselor Holiday, questions, questions of staff?
Thank you. Is Ms. Gray available, please?
I'm here.
Excellent. Thank you very much. How many speed enforcement cameras are there in the city?
We have fifty.
And how many schools? Yep, how many schools do we have?
I believe over eight hundred.
So by my math, that's about, if it's three months per rotation per camera?
That's correct.
So would that be about four years to rotate all those schools?
That sounds about right.
So how come we don't have more cameras?
That's a great question, Deputy Mayor Holiday. The automated speed enforcement program actually has a lot of parts and pieces to it. It's something that has been authorized as a pilot by the province, and they have authorized us to look at or add speed cameras only in certain areas, so community safety zones around schools. And we also have some other component pieces related to the courts, and our legal authority to be able to issue tickets related to automated speed enforcement that have to be currently processed through the court's process. One of the things that Susan Garrasino and courts and others are working on right now is to try to get these tickets enforced via the administrative penalty system, and we are working actively with the province on doing that. That is a pretty significant impact and a restrictor as to why we can't do more, because we need to be able to process the tickets that are issued. So that's sort of the high-level overview.
So if we found you another, I don't know, $25 million to buy 25 cameras, I'm not saying they're a million bucks, but they're expensive. There's more to it than just the cameras.
That is correct.
We need all the backend infrastructure, and that's being thought through.
Absolutely. And Deputy Mayor Holiday, there's also the joint processing center. So we actually process automated enforcement tickets, both red light camera and automated speed enforcement for the province, for the number of jurisdictions that have signed onto those programs. And we have a number of officers who do that review and write those tickets.
So you said something about this being a pilot. So the legislation is looking at this, like it's all, it's been enabled by the province, right? It's not all ours. So what's that relationship?
They have authorized us to do a pilot. They are planning on doing an assessment of that pilot. That review is still pending, and so they will look to see whether the implementation of the program has been done according to the guidelines. And so we're very focused on that, which is why we do a very specific review about the locations where we will place cameras.
And we put them at schools, why?
We put them at schools because the purpose of the legislation that the province authorized was to improve and increase safety for school-aged children and the community at school locations. Safer School Zones Act is the name of the act. It's the Safer School Zones Act.
School zones, okay. But theoretically, I guess they could go into community safety zones, or at least that's what this motion is talking about. Is there any parameters to what a community safety zone is?
There is. Community safety zones are explicitly set out, and we've done a number of reports to actually define the locations on a map of where those community safety zones are in relationship to schools. So it's a very specific determination.
Around, but if we expand the definition, could we do something wild and crazy and say, you know, like the whole 416 is a community safety zone? Do we have that power, as counsel?
I think there would be some discussion with the province about the implementation of this particular act, the Safer School Zones Act, because I don't think that the entire 416 is in the spirit of that. I think there would have to be an ongoing conversation with the province about expansion of the program to various locations, which we're not adverse to having, but I think we have a number of administrative items to get sorted first before we expand the program. And then they will come and do their review, and I think we can engage with them at that time about where we think other locations are where we want to enhance safety using this particular tool.
So if we move the goalposts now on the pilot, do you think that would be positively received or negatively received for all the people that are worried about, you know, making this a success?
We think this is a very successful program. We've gotten a lot of good feedback. We're trying very, very diligently to make sure that we are being quite clear and explicit about how it's being rolled out, because we welcome the province's review and want to demonstrate that it's been a very thorough and thoughtfully implemented program. And so I think that they would want to complete that review before we went back to them and asked for an expansion. I think we could certainly propose expansion of the program within school zones. But again, as I mentioned, the issue right now is getting the administrative penalty system in place so that we can facilitate that without impacting the courts.
And finally, we've been pretty consistent all through this. This has all been about schools. The way the reports were written, the way that announcements were made, really the public's understanding about this whole automated speed enforcement program. It's not necessarily photo radar at large. It was about school zones and the safety and the whole package that goes with the ASE equipment. Is that a fair assertion about how we've made it to this point? Thank you.
Last question. Thank you. Counselor Cole, questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to your Director of Transportation, just, it is, by the way, it is restricted just to schools. The legislation is pretty strict on that. I just wanted to ask, how many cameras have we had stolen?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. There's been 169 instances of what's deemed mischief. Some have been, you know, spray paint vandalism. There's been seven instances of theft. The large balance of them are vandalism. And there's been a number that have been tipped over as well. As you know, Counselor Cole, the program itself is done in partnership with a vendor who is responsible to go back and correct those issues as soon as they come up. And we've actually had very good response from the vendor to correct those situations when they come forward.
Can't we make them more secure, that they can't walk off with them? And can't we put warning that these are basically public safety devices, that vandalism will be treated seriously? I mean, this is incredible. Hundred and sixty-nine cases, you say, of vandalism?
Yes, the bulk of which are, you know, tagging, the bulk of which are tagging. So those that have been impacted in other ways are less than 50 locations. But I would agree with you, it's still a problem and an impact on safety equipment. Certainly, they are large pieces of equipment. They're not something you would just topple over, you know, without having specific intent. You'd really have to want to do that to turn one of these things over. But it does happen with these types of programs. And what we found is the best antidote is to just make sure that we're correcting the problem as quickly as possible, to deter people from thinking that they're making a significant impact on the problem.
The next question is, why aren't there more warning signs that you are approaching speed camera area?
Through the speaker, there are a number of warning signs, and there are also warning signs that go up in advance of when the camera is actually sighted. So we have to put them up 90 days in advance that alert people to the fact that a speed camera will be deployed in that location. And then when we move them, we have to do the next rotation. So there are signs that demonstrate that they're there before they go in at an approach. We share that information with some of our, you know, the vendors who, like Waze and those other vendors in Google who do that work. And they're also signed when they're operational, to demonstrate to drivers that they're actually on and working.
I don't know whether it's just me, but I just don't find them significantly signed on the road, because don't you think it would be a deterrent in itself if people knew they're entering a speed camera zone?
Yes, and we follow the province's requirements at or in advance of the locations of the speed cameras. So the province has dictated the sign and the location and the timeframe duration by which we have to have them in place, so the 90 days that I mentioned previously.
Yes. And the other thing is, again, what do we say to people when they say, how come you took my camera away? Bring it back.
There are a number of locations where, according to the safety data that we've put together, that are eager to have speed cameras. And so we've actually defined a list in every ward, and we've worked with the ward counselor to do that. I also think, and what we've learned from the studies, is that there's a bit of a knock-on effect, so that you still have the effect, when the signs go up to let people know that speed cameras are coming, and it has some dampening effect as well as after they've been in that location. If there's a location that is particularly troubling or difficult with speed impacts, we would potentially rotate back there again. So there's that option. But with only two cameras per ward, we have to be very deliberate about how we deploy them.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ly.
Thank you, Speaker, and through you to staff. You mentioned that this is due because of the province project, Safety, Safer School Zone Act. Just wondered, who is collecting, the city of Toronto is issuing the tickets, are we collecting the fines, and whose coffre would it be in, in the cities or in the province?
Through the speaker to Counselor Ly, I'm actually going to ask Susan Garrasino to answer that question from courts, if she would.
Yes. Thank you for the question, through the speaker to the counselor. The fine revenues are retained by the city. There's a small portion of the fine revenue that's remitted to the province for victim witness programs, but the majority of the money is retained by the city to offset program cost.
Do you have an idea how much have we collected annually?
This will be the first year, 2021, the cameras will be running for 12 months. So for the first six months in the Verance Report, we expected revenues approximately $11 million. We met that target for these types of offenses. That's gross revenue. And year-end, we're on target with the budget from these particular offenses for $22 million. But again, it offsets program costs for the program.
So how much net revenue you think the city will collect over this initiative?
I don't have the full net revenue for this initiative, but I can get back to the counselor on that, because we'd have to factor in all the cost for all of the programs that support this initiative, from transportation services to legal services, and of course courts. And there's several other costs the city occurs for the court services program, such as buildings and rent.
Okay, my last question would be, there will not be any appealing mechanism on the ticket that the people received. Is that correct?
No. Currently, the regime is under the Provincial Offenses Act, and people have a right to dispute the charges. If they dispute the charges, they can ask for a meeting with the prosecutor, for example, or they can go wait to trial. And then if they're not happy with the trial, there's a series of post-conviction interventions that continue to work their way through the court system. The administrative penalty system, which council has requested the province to put in place as an option for these types of offenses, the city has moved their parking violations out of the provincial offenses course and into administrative penalty system. And that's really demonstrated a better customer service and an operational value by removing things from the provincial court system. It gives the public less frustration, because they can get a clear decision made fairly quickly by city staff, and they still have one right to dispute that decision at the city's administrative penalty tribunal. So it's a faster system. It eliminates multiple post-conviction interventions that increase time to trial for other more serious charges. And the administrative penalty system will build capacity in the court system for processing more serious charges.
Okay, thank you. Those are very detailed answers. Thank you. Thank you, Speaker. Those are my questions.
Okay, I just want to remind members of council, like it's nine o'clock. So we want to finish this agenda. We have two items left. Okay, Counselor Ainsley, questions?
Thank you, Speaker. I just have one question. I'm going to start with Ms. Gray. I was just wondering how we track injuries or deaths, how these cameras are preventing them. Do we have any comparatives yet, or?
Through the speaker to Counselor Ainsley, thanks for the question. We're actually working with Sick Kids Hospital to do an assessment of the efficacy of the automated speed enforcement cameras. And I believe we'll be coming back in December with a full report that will break down that data and will give a little bit more detailed information than I could provide for you right at this moment. So that will be, I believe, in December, we bring that report back.
Okay. And is there any plan on the data being on the city's open data portal?
Yes, I believe there is.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Okay, so Counselor Holiday, you just want to move the motion?
No.
Pardon?
I would like to make a comment, Madam Speaker. I definitely don't want to move those motions.
Okay, it's nine o'clock. Counselor Holiday to speak.
I understand.
Okay.
I, thank you.
Just speak quickly.
Thank you, Speaker. I will not be supporting these motions. I would only suggest that members of council look very carefully at what they say. They are essentially photo radar. And in the questions with Ms. Gray, we've been reminded that this is a pilot project, and changing the goalposts right now is not necessarily a helpful thing. I would be the first one to find ways to increase more speed enforcement. I would love to see a motion before us that proposes more traffic officers. We've got great ones out in Tobago. We could use more help. And we all get the speeding complaints, and I think there is room for a lot more enforcement. But I think if we were going to be investing in cameras, we've got a lot of schools that need to be looked after still. Perhaps we should learn to crawl before we can walk. And I do take note that some of these suggest even cameras on expressways, places over 80 kilometers an hour. That is not what any of us had talked about. I will say that collectively, I'm sure others have got different ideas on where photo radar should be. But I do have a big worry about changing what we're doing, changing lanes, so to speak, at this point in time. I think we should stick with the plan. We should make sure. We should make sure that the system works. We should be looking after our school zones as the first priority. And there are plenty of ways to increase enforcement, including having officers out there on the street. And I would just be really, really careful with what these things say and the message the council is sending if we choose to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Leighton.
Madam Speaker, I planned on calling the question, but as Mayor Torrey added him, I am happy to let him have the last word.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Torrey. Mayor Torrey, we can't hear you.
We can hear him. We can hear him.
I can't.
Or maybe I'm cursed.
We can hear him.
You can hear the mayor.
But we can't hear him. I can't hear him.
Fix your system there.
Why don't you come and fix it, councillor Cole?
Happy to take the chair, Madam Speaker, if you like.
Let's have a real meeting. Get rid of these virtual meetings.
Yeah, well, nobody's stopping you from coming to City Hall. You're welcome.
Yeah, we want a real meeting, though. I can come to City Hall, but we need a meeting in City Hall, in the chamber.
Okay, Mayor, we have to fix. Mayor, if you can disconnect and then reconnect.
We can all hear you, sir.
You can hear you, Mr. Mayor.
What are we going to do?
Say, speak, speak, speak. We can hear you. Speak.
Okay, will you stop, please?
The mayor said to move on.
We cannot hear in the council chambers.
Okay, Madam Speaker, the mayor said you can move on. You just need someone to move the motion.
What?
The mayor said you can move on because you can't hear him. So you need just someone to move the motion. He said he can move on.
The motion.
Okay, on member's motion thirty-six, MM thirty-six point nine. Councillor Holliday.
Recorded vote.
Yes, I was just going to say that. Recorded vote.
Councillor Cole, it appears to us you've not received the vote, so could you state your vote, please?
Yes, and the affirmative.
Councillor Prudse, please, your vote. Speaker, the item carries sixteen to four.
Yes, and the affirmative.
On MM thirty-six fifteen, recorded vote.
Standby, members. We're just. The voting panel is now open. Councillor Cressy, your vote, please.
In favor. Thank you.
Councillor Cole, how do you vote, sir?
In favor.
Speaker, the item carries eighteen to one.
Okay, if I can ask the mayor if he could speak so we can, we know if it's working now.
Yeah, can you, I've logged back on. Can you hear me now, Speaker?
Yes, we can hear you. Sorry, we couldn't hear you. I know other members of council heard you, but not in the council chambers or on YouTube. Okay, thank you.
Speaker.
Yes?
Speaker.
Yes.
The clerk has the reopening motion quickly that I would hope you could entertain to reopen and add one thing on thirty-six point two-nine.
Yes, if we can put that motion, councillor Fletcher is asking that we reopen MM thirty-six twenty-nine on the planning application of building permit fees for Toronto community housing. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
It's on the screen, on favor.
I'll move that. Thank you.
Okay, carried.
And then add the other, last other, one other property there, please.
Okay, there it is there.
Thank you so much.
Fifty-one Diberton Avenue.
Yes.
On favor. Show of hands, carried. Item is amended, on favor. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Okay, our next item is MM thirty-six twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I was prepared to release this to councillor Leighton to move his motion.
Okay, just one sec. Okay, councillor MM thirty-six eighteen. Are there any questions to staff? Okay. On, we'll vote on the, councillor McKevy, Mackelvie, did you have questions or do you want to speak?
Councillor Leighton has the motion to move.
Okay, councillor Leighton, let's put councillor Leighton's. Let's put councillor Leighton's motion on the screen so we can vote on it.
The motion revises recommendation one to read, city council requests the general manager of transportation services to ensure the scope of work for the Avenue Road north of Blor Street West evaluates the Avenue Road Safety Coalition's complete streets concept and explores options to expedite the implementation, including a pilot project. This motion, there's, there's two, I think, three contributing factors to this motion. One was a contractor of the cities that improperly installed their construction staging along Blor Street, which prompted an outcry from the community because all of a sudden, lane abruptly end with, with the lanes merging into absolutely no warning in a very dangerous fashion. And then shortly after, or days after, at that location around the corner with the University bike lanes, there was a tragic incident which involved an eighteen-year-old out for a bike ride, six o'clock, and six PM bike ride just around the neighborhood, and he was hit and killed. And the family would like some answers. The family would like to know if there's anything that we can do. And there is, and we know that. We know how to make our streets safer. It's not rocket science. And our, our staff had previously been given a recommendation to examine this stretch. And what we're saying here is, can we expedite that work at all? To look at a very fast stretch of road in the downtown core that's surrounded by a growing neighborhood with tens of thousands of new units coming on stream, very narrow sidewalks along sections of Avenue Road, particularly north of Blor on the west side, but also that stretch quite far north. It's a very dangerous section of road, and we would like staff to move quickly and perhaps through by way of pilots, like we've had a tendency to do in the past, in the past couple of years on, on roads like these. So we're hoping that you'd see fit to have us ask to expedite it and see what we can do in the longer term on some of the other issues that contributed to what was a very scary time at the corner of University and, and Avenue Road recently. Would also add that the community, on their own volition, hired an architecture firm that put together a rather elaborate proposal for, for this section of road. They're under no, they're under no assumptions that we're going to be able to do this overnight, but they wanted to try to provide a vision for the road. It's quite beautiful. It, it, it changes what, what reads now as kind of a highway through the downtown core into more of an inviting space for, for, for different users of the, of, of the road and the, and the sidewalks, but does maintain a traffic movement through the intersection. We're not moving ahead or committing to that here. We would like city staff to evaluate that as part of the larger project that you have already supported at council. So thank you very much for entertaining us.
Okay, well, we have questions for you. Councillor Fletcher, three minutes. Councillor Fletcher?
I just have, thank you. I just have one question for you, councillor Leighton. Have you had a chance to ask staff if, when they're contracting, that within the RFP or the tender, there's very clear instructions regarding roadworks, regarding where the pylons are going, and requirements to keep the road in a certain, with, with certain space, et cetera? Have you investigated that at all?
My understanding, my, my understanding is that there is. And this particular firm that was on Blor Street, so unrelated to the, to the young man's death, but this particular firm was cited for an infraction and a breach of their contract. It was years ago that we first started undertaking this proposal. I think it was a motion from me at, at Environment and, or Infrastructure Committee years ago that started that. My understanding is that they're in there, but it's a, it's an issue that persists, that happens around the city.
Have you ever seen the wording? Have you seen the wording? Has the committee seen the wording that goes in the tender?
I have not, I have, I have not seen the wording, but it looks, it seems to me that my motion will cover that.
Would you think that would come to I and E where you would have oversight of what the wording looks like currently and if it is strong enough or clear enough or broad enough?
The request is for that it come to I and E December second.
Yes, that's for Avenue Road. I'm talking about just generally now.
So the second part, the second part of the motion is, is more generally.
We're asking questions on clarification of the motion. Thank you. Councillor Holliday, question on the motion clarification, three minutes.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Speaker. The Avenue Road Safety Coalition's requests, that's a separate list, is one of the requests to change the traveled lanes into extended sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a narrowing of lanes, just so members of council know, because we, we're not all familiar with the, all of the requests from the coalition. Thank you.
Yes.
Councillor Matlow to speak.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank councillor Leighton for moving the motion. We're working very closely together, given that we share, share border between two parts of one community. And, you know, even before the, the tragic incident that councillor Leighton referred to, there have been conversations going on for several years now with members of the community, whether it be residents, public schools, churches, retired residents, you know, members of the community that have expressed great concern about the safety of Avenue Road. Any of us who are familiar with Avenue Road knows that it really acts like a highway much of, much of the day. People are speeding routinely down, down the hill. The sidewalks that councillor Leighton referred to are incredibly narrow, and at times there are hydropoles actually in the middle of that, that narrow sidewalk. And so the community, for a long time, has been asking for, for something to change to make it safer. And in fact, there's even been discussions between, you know, community members, what does that look like? Should there be bike lanes? Should there be wider sidewalks? What is the answer? And that's why we've been working with our professional transportation staff to, to arrive at the best solution. But it's taken a long time, and that's why the Avenue Road Safety Coalition, I believe, undertook to commission Brandon Story to come up with, you know, work with them on proposing a vision to really spur us into action. And I really appreciate that effort because I, I think it's really helpful. The outcome obviously needs to be considered and discussed as a council, but we really do need city staff to continue to work with us, along with the residents, to address ongoing and very valid concerns. So I look forward to continuing that. And I want to thank Barbara Gray and, and Michelle and all of their staff for working with us so well, along with our community. And I look forward to further conversations about exactly how we're going to make Avenue Road the safest road it can be. As we have, this council has many other streets throughout the city, and, you know, people along Avenue are just saying, why not us? You know, why have we not been, why haven't our concerns been addressed as well as others? And this is, this is their opportunity, and I really appreciate all of your support for that.
Okay, on the amendment, on favor.
Recorded vote. Recorded vote.
Recorded vote.
Councillor Cole, how do you vote, sir?
And the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker. The amendment carries. The vote is seventeen to two.
Speaker, on a point of order, may I request a recorded vote on the clauses amended only on item number one?
Yeah, councillor Holliday, we just voted on number one. We deleted it.
Thank you. So it was voted on as amended. Thank you.
No, the item, item one we voted on, that was the amendment.
Madam Speaker, my, my advice to you is you can't split out item number one to vote on it again because you just voted on item number one. So the next vote would be item as amended.
So item as amended, recorded vote.
Councillor Cole, how do you vote, sir?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Speaker, the item as amended carries. The vote is seventeen to two.
So we'll now go to MM thirty-six point twenty-five.
If I, if I may ask, point of order, Madam Speaker, do we have a member of the Toronto Police Service here to answer questions?
No, we don't. We tried. They are not available because the motion did not mention the police board, and the president was not requesting an event, so they're not here.
Did mention the police, though. Okay, I will proceed without, it would have been helpful to have them here.
On the item?
So I have questions to make.
Councillor, councillor Matlow, question? If you can put your name on the screen.
Oh, I, given that I held the item, I didn't realize I had to. Would you prefer that I do?
Well, you should still put your name on the screen.
Okay. So.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So through you to city staff, what is the, what is the protocol when engaging the Toronto Police Service on an action that may involve violence? What is the, what is the formal city protocol on that?
So if I can, and Speaker, you may want to hold the councillor's time. So with us on this item is Tracy Cook, and Tracy can speak to that specific question, but I just want members of the council to know Gort Tanner is here, acting in Mary Ann Bedard's capacity, as well as Brad Ross, in terms of anything that we've communicated to the media, and obviously myself, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Murray, my time is still going in.
No, it shouldn't be. I, I've asked if it's possible to hold it. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that staff are ready to answer all your questions.
Madam Speaker, would you mind resetting that?
Yeah. So Tracy, if you can answer the specific question that the councillor raised.
Certainly, thank you. Through you, Madam Speaker. Councillor Matlow, our engagement with the Toronto Police Service is on an ongoing basis. In the case of the matter before you today, we engaged the police to ensure public safety was maintained while city staff were undertaking the activities they were tasked to.
Do we, do we have a protocol, though?
We don't have a drafted protocol specifically. We have ongoing engagement. The Toronto Police Service, in this particular instance, has been a member of our interdivisional steering committee dealing with encampments since May of last year.
I asked, I asked the deputy earlier on councillor Cole's motion regarding the anti-vax protests, regarding sort of the threshold and sort of, you know, when, when do we intervene and when do we not? So like, could you, could you, like, I, I'm, I'm just confused about sort of a lack of protocol, given, given that we're dealing with a number of different actions that may involve people, it may, it may involve violence. Let me move on, though, to the ombudsman's purview. So we have an accountability officer who has announced that he is going to be undertaking an investigation into the city's actions. The city engaged the police, if I'm, if I'm correct, on those actions. Is it our understanding that the ombudsman's purview stops at the police, though? So, so in other words, his, the scope of the investigation is limited by the restrictions on his purview?
Through, through you, Madam Speaker. According to the ombudsman's letter, the focus is on the entirety of the process that we followed, which would include our engagement of the Toronto Police Service and how that engagement was requested. I think it would be best that the ombudsman speak to the extent to which his purview will extend into the activities of the Toronto Police Service, noting as well that there are accountability provisions that oversee policing activities in the city through a variety of other means.
Once you were aware that violence had occurred, and there was violence towards the protesters, did you, did you take a different approach? Did you consider a different action plan? Or did you repeat, did the city repeat the same approach with the subsequent clearings to bring the police in even before the protesters had arrived?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I, I think councillor Matlow, there needs to be some clarity in respect to the violence that you're referencing. I will say that in all instances, and actually since May, at least May of last year, the Toronto Police Service has been advised and engaged when we have been undertaking activities at encampments, and their response and their deployment has been directly proportionate to the risk assessment undertaken and based on the context of the situation that they encountered or expected to encounter, whether it be protest activity or otherwise.
You, you believe that it was appropriate and reasonable? You think that the, the violence that those protesters were subject to was appropriate and reasonable?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I do not believe that that's an appropriate question for me to be answering, councillor Matlow. It sounds like you're making an allegation or complaint in regards to police conduct that is tantamount to violence. That is not in a particular area that I should be speaking to. If, if you do believe that that is the case, there is the Office of the Independent Police Review Director, who would be the ones that would undertake a review of whether or not violence was perpetrated involving police officers.
Okay, that was your last question. Thank you. Councillor Layton, question?
Yes, thank you very much. This question is to the city solicitor.
Okay.
Does the ombudsman, does the ombudsman have the purview to investigate the actions of Toronto Police?
No, that's a carve out from the ombudsman's jurisdiction under the legislation. There are other oversight bodies, though, that do have the jurisdiction to review police actions, and I'm not aware of that actually being included in a judicial inquiry under the City of Toronto Act or the Municipal Act.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Menon Wong, question?
Yeah, thanks. The city solicitor, what, the last question, what, what, what isn't included? Can you clarify what you just said?
In the, the ombudsman's jurisdiction, it does not include all local boards. There are some that are carved out, and the Police Services Board is one of the boards that is carved out. However, there are other oversight bodies for the police. The Office of the Independent Police Review Commissioner is, is one. And so I don't believe that police would normally be part of a judicial inquiry under the City of Toronto Act. I'm not familiar with, with that jurisdiction being extended.
So, so anyone could go to this Office of the Independent Investigator, Police Independent Investigator, is that what you called it? They could go and make that complaint if they wanted to, correct?
Anyone can complain about police conduct.
Anyone can complain. So are you aware of any complaints that have been made?
I am not, but I would not be.
Okay. Can I ask you a question? How much does a judicial inquiry cost?
The only judicial inquiry that I know the cost of is the Bellamy Inquiry, which was the Toronto computer leasing matter that took place between two thousand and two and two thousand and five, and it cost nineteen point two million dollars at that time.
And once that starts, they just present you with a, they present the city with a bill, is that fair to say?
The city cannot put a cap on the cost, the city cannot tell the judge that they only want it to take two weeks. You know, the judge will have a mandate and will fulfill it.
So councillor Matlow was complaining about two million dollars being spent to clear the camps, but he's, he wants a judicial inquiry that's going to cost, could cost twenty million dollars, ten times that amount.
Order, that's not a question that's argumentative.
That's a great question.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
It's difficult for me to say what, what the inquiry that's proposed would cost.
But any, and just once again, the ombudsman isn't conducting an investigation, and he's using his existing resources, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Matlow to speak.
When councillor Layton and I moved motions prior to the encampment clearings, to take a more collaborative approach, to do this peacefully and work with both some of our most vulnerable residents, but also the on the ground activists who have advocated for them, we believe that that would have averted what happened this summer. The mayor whipped the vote and rallied, rallied council to vote against our motions. What happened subsequently was an ineffective, wasteful, and violent series of encampment clearings. Ineffective because the vast preponderance of people who were in those parks did not go into what the mayor described as safe indoor spaces, which they are also telling us they don't feel safe in. But they went to other parks. They went to, under, under a bridge in a ravine, they went to laneways, they went to other neighborhoods. It did not fix a problem, it simply shoved the problems out of sight in one place to just simply show up in another place. It was wasteful because even the cost of staffing, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars roughly, let alone the remediation costs, could have paid for virtually every one of those people to have stable housing for a year in the city of Toronto. It was, it was violent. We all saw the videos, we all saw the photos. Peoples, people were broken, people were, were bruised, people were shoved backwards. Journalists, this city and the police restricted journalists' movement, the ability to cover the events, and photojournalists, internationally recognized photojournalists, were arrested for doing their job. That is unprecedented in Toronto, that does not happen, should not happen in a civil and free society. And, you know, our leadership, the mayor and others, have just been defending this over and over and over again, rather than recognizing that what happened was wrong, the approach was wrong. We are not debating whether or not tents should be in our parks forever. I don't agree that they should, but I fundamentally disagree with the approach that was taken. And I support, as does councillor Layton, the investigation that's been announced by the ombudsman. The ombudsman, an independent accountability officer, recognizes that this approach merits Something was wrong, and we need to hold ourselves to account. But the independent accountability officer's purview does not extend to the police. This is not simply a complaint about the police. This is the city's engagement of the police. The city requested the police to go in in large numbers, militarized, weaponized, on horses, escalating a situation that got out of control. And rather than concede that this was not done well, that this wasted tax dollars, that this was ineffective, that this physically hurt people who were simply trying to stand up for our city's most vulnerable, we defended. The mayor is going around calling councillor Layton and myself and councillor Longham and others names and, and, and using hyperbole, rather than actually addressing the problem. Now, I was reading an article from the nineteen nineties about the tent city down on the, on the waterfront, and it just, you know, it occurred to me that we keep repeating the same problem, patterns. We, we're not actually addressing affordability, we're not addressing access to housing, and for those individuals who do need mental health care and addiction support, we collectively as a society has failed them. And this generation is, we're dealing with the consequences of that inaction and that ineptitude by governments, successive governments. And we have an opportunity as a group here to do something right, to hold ourselves accountable, to demand change of the province and of ourselves, and ultimately do what's right to make sure that people don't die in our streets.
Ten seconds.
If we are proud of the actions that we took and we believe the police did everything right, we should not be afraid of asking for the answers.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Menon Wong to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I was so hopeful of councillor Matlow. A few weeks ago, he was complaining about how much money was being spent by the, by the city to remove these protesters, and I thought to myself, I've got, I've got a new, I've got a new champion in fiscal conservatism, someone who's interested in saving money at City Hall. I thought that was fantastic. He was so genuine and wanted, wanting to save money. And now he comes, and instead of complaining about spending two million dollars, he wants to spend twenty million dollars.
Madam Speaker, a point of privilege. Sorry, excuse me, Deputy Mayor, I am not.
I, I think I have the floor.
I, I do have a point of privilege.
Madam Chair, I think I have the floor.
Okay.
Deputy.
What's your point of order, councillor Matlow?
It's not a point of order, it's a point of privilege.
Can I have the floor, please?
Okay, Deputy, please. What, what is your point of privilege?
The Deputy Mayor, the Deputy Mayor just accused me of wanting to spend twenty million dollars. I have never suggested that, I have never said that. That was just made up, and I'd like him to withdraw that. I'm not going around telling people, you know, they spend a billion dollars on, on Expressway, and that's a waste of money today.
Councillor Matlow, the question was asked to the solicitor, how much would cost for an inquiry? The solicitor responded twenty million dollars, so he is quoting, he's quoting the solicitor, our solicitor, so.
No, no, she was referring to the Bellamy Inquiry. That's not true, Madam.
Councillor Matlow, I'm sorry, okay, Deputy Mayor Menon Wong, do you want to continue?
I'd like him to withdraw that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In all seriousness, Madam Chair, councillor Matlow, by going down this course of action...
Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, you have not addressed my point of privilege. The deputy speaker just made up.
I did, I did address it, councillor Matlow, it's not a point of personal privilege.
Then I'd like a ruling. The Deputy Mayor just made up.
My ruling is, my ruling is it's not a point of personal privilege, that the, the Deputy, the Deputy Mayor was just commenting, quoting what our city solicitor answered the question, that's all.
That's factually incorrect, Madam Speaker. That's just not true. That's just not true.
Okay, well, I've ruled. I've ruled, councillor Matlow.
I'm challenging that ruling, and I'd like the deputy speaker. He was referencing the Bellamy report, and I have never suggested that I want to spend $20 million.
Okay, councillor Matlow, do you want?
He said that I did.
Councillor Matlow, are you going to challenge me or not?
I am, yeah.
Okay, then just challenge me.
I have.
Okay.
Madam Speaker, just stand by while we prepare the motion to take the vote.
Okay. Recorded vote. Shall the chair be upheld?
We have two members who have not received the vote. Deputy Mayor Minewong, how do you vote, sir?
Yeah, my voting panel never opened. I'm voting to call the chair.
Thank you. Councillor Cole, how do you vote, sir?
Affirmative.
Councillor Pasternak in the affirmative.
Madam Speaker, the chair is upheld. The vote is 16 to 2.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Minewong, if you'd like to continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Back to the speakers list.
What I will say in all seriousness, sorry, there's some echoing. Can you hold my time? There's some.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In all seriousness, if we asked the city solicitor, she said the last inquiry cost $19.2 million. There's no reason to think that the next inquiry that councillor Matlow wants would cost tens of millions of dollars. That's the seriousness of it. And we should take this serious. The ombudsman is investigating. And quite frankly, with regard to the issue of the encampment clearing, I think the city handled this properly. The mayor showed the right type of leadership, the proper careful temperament. He tried to clear, we tried, the city tried to clear this encampment very gently. All these folks were, all these individuals in the encampments were offered housing. They were offered counseling. They refused that. There was no choice left. And then the professional protesters came in as well. So I think the public supports the mayor in this, and that we took the proper actions that were necessary to enforce the law. So I think that we should vote against this. The ombudsman is doing his investigation. If the councillor wishes to go to the complaints process at the Toronto Police Services, he should go and do so, but he shouldn't burden the taxpayers of the city of Toronto with something that will cost, that could cost up to $19 million. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Grimes to speak.
Call the question, Madam Speaker.
Okay, councillor Grimes is calling the question. Recorded vote.
Madam Speaker, again, just stand by while we prepare that motion for the vote. We have three members who did not receive the votes. I'm going to call for the vote verbally. Councillor Pasternak, please.
In the affirmative.
Councillor Cole, please.
Affirmative.
Deputy Mayor Minewong, please.
Mr. Clerk, is this voting for the members' motion? Because I vote against the members' motion.
No, no, this motion is to call the question.
Oh, no, this is calling the question.
Call the question.
I vote to call the question. Thank you. Have a long night.
Well, can you imagine how I feel?
But you asked for this job.
Yeah, you liked the job.
Yes, but, okay.
The motion and debate carries. The vote is 13 to 5.
Okay, on the motion, recorded vote. Now we're voting on the motion.
so I'm going to ask them to state their vote, please, starting with councillor Cole.
Affirmative.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Minewong, please.
I vote against the motion.
Oh, sorry, I voted the wrong way.
Councillor Cole, will you restate your vote, please?
I'm against the motion.
Councillor Ainsley, please. Councillor Ainsley in the affirmative. Thank you. And councillor Pasternak, please.
No, he said, I thought he said against.
Sorry, he said against.
I said against.
Oh, thank you. That's why I repeated it. Thank you. Councillor Ainsley.
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Pasternak, please.
Yes, against. In the negative.
Speaker, the motion does not carry. The vote is 5 to 14.
Thank you. Our next item that was held down is MM 3628, waiving fees for outdoor fitness permits for businesses. Councillor Perks, you held the item down. Do you have questions to staff?
I do not.
No? Would you like to speak on it?
I most certainly would.
Okay, councillor Perks to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I want to be clear at the outset that I completely appreciate the idea behind this notice of motion. Getting people out to exercise, helping fitness clubs, it's all good. But for as long as I have been on council, the issue around commercial activities in parks has been fraught and difficult. Some examples, during my tenure on this council, we all woke up one day and found that a car company had surreptitiously overnight gone and put their logo in about a dozen of our parks as a guerrilla marketing campaign. Another thing, when I first came into office, the entire Western Beaches, every long weekend for the entire summer, would be occupied by so-called charity events, events which had beer and pizza and wings and live music and all of this stuff. On closer investigation, we found that the charities were receiving a couple of thousand dollars each, but that the private operators brought in by the charities to host these events were making hundreds of thousands of dollars. And because of that, over time, we gradually took all of that stuff out. We have had instances of city parks telling people who are running walks in our parks, you know, get-to-know-you-meet-and-greet-walks, can do that, but they can't charge money for it. There's a large policy question behind allowing commercial activities in our parks that needed to be thought through before we start to do this. Who's to say that the fitness clubs aren't advertising big car companies? Who's to say they don't bring in private operators to pull the event together and that the fees to those private operators are greater than the revenue to the fitness club? There are many, many risks in doing this simply as a notice of motion. And I really do wish we had had time for this to go through a standing committee so we could have done some work with city staff to set appropriate limits around this. Here we are, 10 o'clock at night, and we have no time to work through what those limits would be. So reluctantly, even though I understand the good impulse here, I can't support it.
Do we have any further speakers? Okay. On the motion, did you want a recorded vote, councillor Perks?
Yes, recorded.
Yes, please.
Recorded vote.
to state their vote verbally. Deputy Mayor Minewong, please.
Yes, I'm in favor of the report recommendations.
Councillor Cole, please. How do you vote?
In the negative.
The vote is 15 to 2.
Last item is MM 3650. Councillor Layden, it's a members' motion that you introduced. Would you like just to move it? Councillor Layden? Or councillor Matlow, one of yous?
Okay, take it easy.
Hi. I will move this motion.
It's a members' motion that was introduced earlier.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I will move the motion.
Can we just put, it's on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. In favor, opposed, if any, carried. Okay, that's it. Members, before we begin our closing routine, I wanted to officially welcome Paul Johnson, our new deputy city manager, who has attended his first council meeting. I don't know if he has his video on or not. Welcome. Members may have a...
Thank you.
Members...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the welcome.
Yeah, it's exciting, isn't it?
Good luck.
I think you should be congratulated for staying so long.
I hope the contract is signed.
Okay, members...
Half of probably left.
The contract was signed. We're good.
Members, may I have a motion regarding the consideration of submissions on zoning bylaw and official plan amendments? Councillor Perks, would you like to move that?
I'd be delighted. I move that the committee and council considered submissions in making a decision on zoning bylaw and official plan amendments.
All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, if any, carried. May I have a motion to introduce the general bills? Councillor Grimes.
Leaky granted bills 723 and 726 to 794.
Shall Lee be granted to introduce these bills? All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, if any, carried. Shall these bills be passed and declared as bylaw? All those in favor, show of hands, carried. May I have a motion to introduce a confirming bill? Mayor Tory.
Speaker, yes, that Lee be granted to introduce the bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of city council meeting 36 on October 1st and 4th, 2021.
Shall Lee be granted to introduce this bill? All those in favor, show of hands. Opposed, if any, carried. Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? All those in favor, show of hands, carried. Thank you. And it is 10 o'clock, just after 10. Want to thank staff especially. It's been a lot of challenges today with all these difficulties that we've had. So thank you very much to all the staff. Thank you to members of council. Good night. Stay safe.
I want to thank councillor Lunsia for the great job. Way to go, Frances.
Thank you, Frances. Thank you.
The best, Frances.
Well, remember that the next time you scream.